Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the City of Palacca, March 25th, 2021, City Commission Meeting. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. At this time, we're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance, as well as our invocation by our chaplain, Pastor Alonzo Mulberry. You will come forward at this time. Everyone, please stand.
...of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you once again for the opportunity to come together. We pray that you would bless our gathering as we come to do the business of the city. We ask for your wisdom, and your guidance, and your directions in all that we undergo to do. Let your name be praised among us in this place, and we will forever give you glory and honor in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplain. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill. Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Barron.
Present.
President and County Park.
And we have a court. Move forward at this time with approval of minutes from the March 11th meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries unanimously. Next up, is Palacca Police Department's recognitions. We've got, under Item 3, Public Recognition and Presentations. First up is PPD recognition of Officer Austin Narcross, Officer Thomas, Officer Cameron Wall, and Lieutenant Aston Cassidy for their quarterly awards and nominations, as well as other introductions. Chief Shaw.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Today, as I spoke to you on our last meeting-
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Today, as I spoke to you on our last meeting, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our new officers to the Palaka Police Department, as well as to honor our first quarter award winners. If you would, gentlemen, if you guys will line up across the back.
We just restarted capacity for, from the CDC. I feel safer.
Some of these individuals have been on department just coming up on a year, and then others have just joined us and are in training, but we wanted to be able to take this opportunity as we began to replace and introduce them to the commission. As I call your name, if you are present, please step up, step forward. Blaine Snyder. Anthony Solis. Curtis Williams. Matthew Buchanan. Tommy Robinson. Eric Cliven. Douglas Threadford. And not present with us here today as far as our new officers is Cameron Wall, Austin Norcross, and our minority recruit, which is Travis Crumpton. Also with us today, I have a couple individuals that I'd like to honor for first quarter awards. You all had the opportunity to hear about one of them in our last meeting, and I'm just going to start from the top. Kathy Newcom, would you please come up and help me out, please? Our first individual I'd like to go over, and I know he has someplace to be, so I'll call him out for this reason. I received a letter from a young lady who was just passing through. The letter read, "Chief Shaw, I wanted to let you know how thankful we are for Lieutenant Cassidy's assistance. We were on your, we were in your town for our son's wedding held at Coventry Oaks. We were unfortunately involved in a theft where wedding cards from our housekeeper at the hotel was stolen. My son Brock Belcher contacted your department and Lieutenant Cassidy assisted him. We thought for sure he would just say, 'You can file a report and go on about his business.' He immediately contacted hotel security, viewed security footage, found what appeared to be the housekeeper's on video. He actually found some of the missing cards ripped up in the trash can. He kept our son updated with his progress. We did get, ended up getting reimbursed by the hotel. We greatly appreciate Lieutenant Cassidy and all he did. Lieutenant Cassidy not only has to run his district for Alpha District, but he also, from time to time, works days and nights managing that district. For him to actually take a call and work the entire call himself is honorable and goes above and beyond what we asked for from the police department. And for this first quarter award, we want to appreciate him with a certificate. Certificate reads, "For your high quality of service and above and beyond approach to the Belcher family, you are an asset to the Palaka Police Department and the community." Lieutenant Ashton Cassidy. Our next individual, you got to hear about in our last meeting from Mr. Wayne McLean. Mr. McLean read a letter involving a case from the Beck Automotive Group where Mr. Johnson went above and beyond by executing his duties as an officer and making sure that not only the perpetrator was apprehended, but he was also, that Beck was also returned, the property was returned. And for his outstanding work, we wanted to honor Mr. Johnson. The Beck Automotive Group commends you on your diligence and persistence in recovering valuable parts stolen from their site. Your professionalism and thoroughness in solving the case is extremely appreciated. Your continuous high quality of service is an asset to the Palaka Police Department and the community. Mr. Johnson, we thank you. Our next two award winners are not here, but I do want to take time, oh, I'm sorry, Cameron, Cameron, you arrived. Cameron Wall, who we missed earlier. Mr. Wall was involved in a narcotics case where his keen eye and persistence and his investigative intellect landed a trafficking amount or a large amount of narcotics and guns. He removed two guns, an assault rifle, and a large amount of marijuana off the street. Mr. Wall, for your investigative efforts, your hard work on the night shift, your continuous high quality of service is an asset to the Palaka Police Department and the community. For that, we thank you, Cameron Wall. Our last individual, make sure he didn't come in late, is Mr. Norcross. Mr. Norcross is not here because he actually had an incident last night where he had to go to the hospital, so he was unable to join us today. But Mr. Norcross had two cases. One was a drug case where he had a trafficking amount of prescription pills, I'm sorry, of methamphetamine. And he also had a stolen vehicle. With the stolen vehicle, the stolen vehicles were reported. They came across and Norcross kept looking and with his persistence was able to find the vehicle. He was also able to apprehend the subject before he got away. When officers arrived, they noticed that Mr. Norcross was placing the individual in handcuffs and in the car. Mr. Norcross has just completed training. Lieutenant Cassidy was about three weeks ago? Three weeks ago, so he is showing up to be a very good officer for our agency. His certificate reads, "For your persistent search of a stolen vehicle and your controlled and quick apprehension of the car thief, you have been an asset to the Alpha's team since your completion of FTO. Your hard work is a credit to the agency." And we want to say thank you to Austin Norcross. And that sums up our officers and our recognition, and thank you for the opportunity to introduce them to you today and to be able to present these awards in front of you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome to the city of Palaka. And again, we just appreciate all that you do and the sacrifices that you make on a daily basis. Anything for the commission?
Yes, I'd like to just thank the guys for all that they do for the city of Palaka, and many times people don't realize that you guys are the ones that's running to danger as opposed to most people are running from danger. So we certainly appreciate everything you've done, your sacrifices that you've made, and we look forward to continuing that level of service in our city, and we hope to have you guys here for some time. So thank you and welcome aboard.
Mayor, I would like to have, I have something to say. First, I would apologize for not being in attendance tonight, but I do want to say I've had the opportunity to meet a few of you guys prior to this evening. However, I want to welcome each of you that are new to the family. We know that you guys often face what we fear, and overall, you have a tough job. And it seems these days it's a bit more tougher. However, there may be, you know that you're going to come upon a time in your career, you may want to choose a different career path, but we want you all to remember, because of your hard work and determination, the community is able to rest well at night. So with that being said, we just want to thank you guys for all you do, and again, welcome aboard.
Commissioner Jones here. I would like to say welcome aboard to the city of Palaka. Thank you guys for serving and Cassidy, Lieutenant Cassidy, thank you for the tremendous work you've done. I want you guys to actually stay here in Palaka because we've been known as a training ground, but we would like to keep you guys here long-term, make this a career move, not just a job. Thank you, guys.
I too wish to thank you all for your commitment to helping make this community better. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to seeing the great works that you will continue to do for this community and the relationships that you will build with the citizens of this community to let them know that you are here for them and not against them. So again, we thank you for your commitment, thank you for your dedication, and welcome to the city of Palaka.
Moving the agenda forward at this time. We'll move into our Student of the Month for 2021, March of 2021. I'll entertain a motion to counsel Student of the Month. Just kidding. We're going to have our Student of the Month. At this time, we want to make sure, as always, that we take time out to first foremost, give thanks to all of our teachers and our educators who are assembled throughout this room and throughout our Zoom land. And we just want to thank you for the sacrifices and the commitments that you've made to our young people, particularly during this difficult time. And so we'd just like to say thank you to them and for all that they've invested into our students, and let's give them a round of applause. And next, we want to say thank you to our extended family members and parents and everyone who's taken the opportunity to truly help raise these kids, because it takes a village to raise a child, and we want to just thank everyone who's had their input into these children's lives, who've sowed seeds into them and for them to be as successful as they are at this point. And so again, we want to thank the families of our students for all the work that they've done as well. Let's give them a round. Now to our honorees. We will start our presentation for Student of the Month for March 2021. Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Board, name is always typed in there. So Commissioner Jones, I'll let you lead us off with some words for this month. From CL Overturf Junior Sixth Grade Center, Lily Parkhurst. Children's Reading Center Charter School, Hadley Griffith. Looks like Jonathan Griffith. She is a lot prettier than Jonathan. Next up. E.H. Miller School, Angel Giovanni Servin Quiñones. James J. Long Elementary School, Kayden Heckman. From Jenkins Middle School, Kamaya Miles. Kelly Smith Elementary School, Carly Brinker. From Mellon Elementary School, Kamaria Jackson. From Mosley Elementary School. Attilia Dean. From Palaka High School, Tia Starks. And our Baptist Academy, Paisley Brothers. At the Academy of Arts and Sciences, Keith Williams. From Putnam Edge High School, Devon Jones. This concludes our Student of the Month for March 2021. Any words of wisdom for you, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I would like to say congratulations, and I would like to say this to each and every one of the students that were awarded today. You are strong, you are special, you are awesome, you are tough, you are loved, you are not alone, you are supported, you are worth it, you are amazing, you are brave, you are encouraged, and you are a fighter, and you are a future leader. Thank you.
Okay, great words, Commissioner. And I'd like to leave you guys with something that we've been saying since, for 40 years now. Ms. Green had us say it back in the third grade at Mosley Elementary School, and we started every day out by simply saying, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody. You guys are somebody special. You're destined for greatness. We're so proud of you, and we are looking forward to you being the leaders of tomorrow in this community. So just keep up the good work and continue to do great things. And again, congratulations for being Student of the Month. Next up are our proclamations. Ms. Krantz, first up, we have our March of Dimes fundraising days, April 8th through June 8th, 2021. Ms. Ashlyn Merritt, are you here?
I am. Thank you all so much for having me.
Yes, ma'am. It's a pleasure to have you here. The proclamation, and the proclamation reads as follows.
Whereas one in 33 babies are born in the United States with a birth defect, resulting in billions of dollars of costs for care and accounting for 20% of all infant deaths. The March of Dimes, a voluntary health organization, began in 1938 when radio announcer and comedian Eddie Cantor urged his listeners to send their spare dimes to the White House to contribute to a fund for finding a cure for polio. It's working to assure healthy lives for America's babies. And whereas 2021 marks the 83rd year, the March of Dimes has been safeguarding America's infant health and has been a pioneer in preventing birth defects. The nation's number one health problem through programs of research, community services, education, advocacy, prenatal care, and whereas the March of Dimes rally to raise will be virtual from April 8th, 2021 to June 8th, 2021, with a virtual march on June 12th, 2021. And whereas the nation's hope for assuring future generations a healthy starting life depends upon the efforts and commitment of all Americans to participate in socially-distanced fundraising events. The March for Babies, formerly known as Walk America, has been successful for more than 50 years, raising more than 2.4 billion for the March of Dimes mission to improve the health of babies by preventing birth defects and infant mortality. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Longhill, Mayor of the city of Palaka, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, do hereby proclaim April 8th to June 8th, 2021, as March of Dimes fundraising days in the city of Palaka, and urge all citizens of our community to support the important efforts of the March of Dimes in helping to give babies a healthier starting life by participating in and contributing to various March for Babies theme fundraisers. And witness whereof, I appear on to set my hand, you possibly fix this official seal of the city of Palaka this 25th day of March in the year of our 2021.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second by Commissioner McCaskill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause for March of Dimes. Ms. Merritt?
I just, I hope you see the word "thank you" loud and clear on my screen right now because it comes to you with a huge and very sincere heart. This year has been beyond challenging for everybody, and the community of Palaka stepped up in a truly incredible way in 2020 to support moms and babies. I don't know if you realize it, but in the 22 minutes that we've been on the call together, 22 infants have been born in the United States either preterm or with a birth defect, and you all have contributed hugely towards making their starting life so much better. This is a very brief snapshot of the impact that the community of Palaka has helped us make as an organization in 2020, but I do specifically want to address the NICU Family Support Program at the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. Through your efforts, we are able to fund a NICU Family Support Program at Shands Hospital in Gainesville that supports families that are going through this journey through what has been a truly challenging time for all of us, but especially when you're bringing new life into the world. So thank you for making that difference in your community. In addition to that, we were able to step up and make a difference in an even more meaningful way for both healthcare providers and families because of the impact of COVID-19. You'll see a snapshot of that on the screen as well. This wouldn't have been possible without the residents of Palaka and the tremendous support you have made as volunteers, advocates, and fundraisers. We are so very grateful. We hope you'll join us this year in March for Babies, a Mother of a Movement. You can register at marchforbabies.org or consider making a donation. a mother of a movement. You can register at marchforbabies.org or consider making a donation either online or through the campaign at your local public store, which will be taking place from April 15th through the 26th, where you can get involved. Again, I want to be sensitive to the many other areas of business that you have on the agenda. And I will share this slide deck after, after tonight's meeting. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you for helping in the fight for the health of every mom and baby and giving them the best start possible. We're so grateful.
Again, thank you very much for all that you do. And let's give them a round of applause. Next up is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Got Ms. Cotter. And Ettao, CDS Behavior. Proclamation reads as follows.
Whereas future, Florida's future depends on nurturing the healthy development of over four million children in our state. And whereas the abuse and neglect of children can cause severe, costly, and lifelong problems. And whereas every child has the right to be safe physically and mentally healthy and educationally and developmentally on time. And whereas research shows that parents and caregivers who have support systems and know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children. And whereas individuals, businesses, schools, and faith-based and community organizations must make children a top priority and take action to support the physical, social, emotional, and educational development and competency of all children. And whereas during the month of April, in collaboration with the Governor's Office of Adoption and Child Protection, the Department of Children and Families, and the Council of Prevention Fund in Florida, the city of Palaca will support pinwheels for prevention, the statewide campaign promoting awareness of child abuse efforts by encouraging healthy child development, positive parenting practices, and community support. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, on behalf of the Palaca City Commission, hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Prevention Month in the city of Palaca, and urge all who hear or read this proclamation to engage in activities whose purpose is to strengthen families and communities and provide the optimal environment for healthy child development. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause to be fixed the official seal of the city of Palaca, Florida, this 25th day of March in the year of our Lord 2021.
Second. There's a motion on the floor. A second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause. Ms. Cotter, are you doing the honors for us? Ladies, you can stand here if you want to while she's going. Or you can join.
Well, I'd actually like for them to introduce themselves as well.
I'm Nicole Heiss with the Children's Advocacy Center.
I'm Jeklin Weber, the program administrator for the Department of Children and Families.
Cindy Starling, CDS Family and Behavioral Health Services Regional Director.
And I'd, I'd again like to thank the city of Palaca because you've always supported the child abuse prevention. You know, with this being child, child abuse prevention month, it is really a great time to celebrate the good things that our community does to promote healthy child development. Thank you. Support families and to help prevent child abuse and neglect. And of course, due to COVID, we all know that large gatherings and events are discouraged. So we had to be a little more creative this year. So during the pandemic, those, the iconic blue pinwheels still play a prominent role. We, we saw some places that are putting the pinwheels out. And we are asking that any organization that can to, you know, light up blue for us for the month of April. Right now, the courthouse is going to be lit blue for the month of April, which is awesome. Some of the other, what we are doing, since we can't hold a large event, this year, what we're doing is a food drop at Palaca High School. We're gonna all get there about 7:30, get things set up. And from 10 to 12, we'll be doing a food drop for the, for the community for prevention, for child abuse prevention. The other thing, of course, we're urging everyone to wear blue on April 1st to signify because blue is child abuse prevention color. And again, I thank the town of Palaca, the, you have always supported us, city of Palaca, excuse me, have always supported us. And you've always been really awesome. And so if any, anyone else can light up blue, please do.
What's the date of your food drop?
The day, I'm sorry, it's April 10th. It's a Saturday morning. And it's at Palaca High School.
And so always great, it's always a great event. Every year, we're just sorry that COVID won't allow it to be in the same manner. It's always been, this commission has always had, had fun coming out as well as being very informed about many of the things that are out there. I think that we just commend you for the work that you do as it relates to specifically dealing with healing families and also protecting our children who've been abused, abandoned, or neglected. And so we just thank you all for the commitment and the sacrifice for our children.
Thank you. The, each car also will, or each family that gets a box of food will also get a bag filled with prevention material so that they have an, an idea of the resources that are around and, and available to them.
If you can send us maybe the electronic version of your flyer, and then we'll make sure we share it on our social media sites as well with our, with our families. Any other comments from the commission?
I do have a question. If, and thank you all for what you're doing. And if anyone would like to donate any dry goods or food items, where will we drop that out? Will it be at the CDS Family Children, you know, Department or where?
Christie, is there a way for them to drop it off?
Hi, my name is Christie Gillis. I'm the Community Development Administrator with the Florida Department of Children and Families, Circuit 7. The food is actually being provided through Epicure. So they will be picking up the food and there's going to be a truck that is bringing the items to the school there on that Saturday. So we're not doing the food drive itself. The food will be, or will already be provided in its conjunction with Epicure as well as with Flagler Care Connect.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, force?
No other questions. Give them a round of applause.
Would you mind terribly if I had Mr. McLean take a picture of us together?
Sure. Next up is Safe Digging Month. Safe Digging Month. We've got Mr. Brad Martin. From Sunshine 811. You can come forward. Call before you dig. Whereas each year, Florida's vital underground utility infrastructure is jeopardized by unintentional damage by those who failed to call 811 to have underground lines located prior to digging. Whereas undesired consequences such as utility services interruption, damage to the environment, personal injury, and even death are potential results of failing to locate underground lines before digging. And whereas undeserved consequences such as utility service interruption. And whereas Sunshine 811 and 1,000 members promote the national call before you dig number 811 in effort to prevent their damages. And whereas designated by the Federal Communications Commission in 2005, 811 provides excavators and homeowners a simple toll-free number to call and request utility line locations as the intended dig site, at the intended dig site. Whereas through education on safe digging practices, excavators and homeowners can save time and money and prevent serious injury to themselves and others by calling 811 before beginning to dig. Waiting two full business days for location marks, verifying the ability, verifying the utility responses, protecting the marks so they remain visible throughout the project, and finally digging with care around the marks. And whereas all parties agree that safe digging is a shared responsibility. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, on behalf of the Palaca City Commission, hereby proclaim April 2021 a Safe Digging Month in the city of Palaca. And we urge all citizens and contractors to use call 9811 call center to locate underground facilities before beginning excavation or demolition, in addition to all other appropriate safety precautions. And witness where I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palaca, Florida, on this 25th day of March in the year of our Lord 2021. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause. Call while you dig. Call before you dig.
We'd just like to thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and community for your continued support year after year for National Safe Digging Month. The, the entire nation actually took after Florida in proclaiming April. We started the whole process off. Sunshine 811 is the not-for-profit corporation, the call center of Call Before You Dig. So we appreciate the awareness, opportunity to educate the communities, excavators, and utilities, and, and everyone because it pertains for the safety of any excavation projects, the workers, and protection of Florida's infrastructure. So we certainly appreciate it and remind everyone, no matter how big or small, 811 is the number to call your project. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up, Water Conservation Month.
Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, clean and sustainable. Water resources are vital to the Florida's environment and economy and quality of life. And whereas the St. John's River Water Management District and the city of Palaca are working with the state of Florida and other management districts, local governments, and water supply utilities to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the city of Palaca and the state of Florida has designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, as Florida's Water Conservation Month, educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the city of Palaca has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events, and joins St. John's River Water Management District in encouraging and supporting water conservation through its water supply planning processes, cooperative funding programs, technical assistance, and regulatory programs. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water and protecting Florida's water resources. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim the month of April 2021 as Water Conservation Month in the city of Palaca. And I call upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-safe drinking measures and becoming more aware of the need of water. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause to be fixed the official seal of the city of Palaca this 25th day of March in the year of our Lord 2021.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause. With us today, we have Ms. Deirdre Erwin from St. John's River Water Management District.
Hello, and thank you for inviting me to join you tonight. And thank you for yet again passing the resolution for Water Conservation Month. In my role as Water Conservation Coordinator for the district, I would like to thank you. And then also in my role as the co-chair of the Water Use Efficiency Division of the AWWA, we consider April to be a very important month to remind residents to cut down on their water use. This is often the time of the year when they start turning on sprinklers. And we'd just like to remind everyone that water conservation is probably the cheapest alternative water supply and an excellent way that residents and businesses can cut down on their use and help the city with having adequate water supply. So again, thank you so much.
Again, thank you very much. And also thank you to St. John's River Water Management District for being such a great partner of the city, with the city of Palaca, and then also an asset here. And so again, thank you very much for all the work that you do, as well as your agency and for all the kindness of the board as well. And so again, we definitely want to say thank you to you. And we will definitely make sure that our citizens are truly engaged in Water Conservation Month.
Okay, thank you.
Let's give a round of applause. Next up is public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone here wishing to speak during public comment, please fill out a yellow speaker's card for me as well. As those who are watching virtually, you can dial 386-329-0100 extension zero, or you can place your question in the YouTube chat function as well. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment at this time? I've got a couple cards here. And I'm going to call up first, Mr. Brian Rand. Row, I'm sorry, Brian Row. Mr. Manager, if you'll come forward at this time.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you all for having me tonight. Just wanted to, to propose an idea to, to the city of Palaca and really to benefit the county. I've been the store manager of our local Lowe's for going on a year and a half now. In fact, the summer marks 20 years for me in big box retail. But 16 years I spent with a prior organization before the last three plus years I've been with Lowe's. And I must say that one of the things that I admire most about our company is its dedication and commitment to our communities, of which we are based upon, enriching our communities, obviously enriches our own business model and enriches ourselves as individuals that work within the stores and service our community. So with that, one of the things that Lowe's has introduced this year that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, this year is the 100th anniversary of Lowe's. And with that 100th anniversary, a way to celebrate and give back to the towns, to the communities, to the cities, states that have allowed our businesses to come in and operate, we are dedicating $10 million nationwide to do what we call the 100 Hometowns Project. It's 100 hometowns for 100 years. Each of these projects will be granted an amount of up to around $100,000 for remodel project. And those projects are to be used for beautification within the city limits. So one of the things obviously that's recommended is it for, to be something of public access and something that can be of a fairly monumental value in regards to what the community can share and take pride in. And like I said, as, as opposed to what our typical resources look like, we usually get two grants a year in what we call the Lowe's Heroes Project. We've used it multiple times for local elementary schools here in the city of Palaca. We used it recently for the Palaca Waterworks. That's around $2,500 when we do projects like that from a beautification standpoint. We're looking here at, at upwards of around 100,000. Normally, a store manager would not personally invest the time to propose these situations because it is for the community to actually apply for these. But I'm very passionate about the city of Palaca. I'm a graduate of Middleburg High School, but I grew up in Interlock and I grew up in Palaca. I've got lots of friends and family that are in this area. So I'm one of the few lucky store managers that actually gets to manage a store in an area that I consider to be my hometown. So it's, it's very critical and important to me. It's a personal mission of mine for us to be one of those 100 hometowns out of over 1,800 stores in the continental United States. So with that, also Wayne has joined me tonight, Mr. Wayne McLean, if he could come up. One of the things that we have as an idea is to revitalize an amphitheater space on the riverfront. We should have a PowerPoint for everybody to have visibility to it.
Yes. So, Mr. Merritt, this is just one idea that we came up with. We talked to Jonathan Griffin about it a little bit. And this, we're proposing this as kind of being a thought starter for the commission to look at. You want to go to the next slide? So this is some ideas of a revamping of the amphitheater that we've been researching. Most of them, as you can, this one particularly has a canopy with lighting and sound that kind of, you can see that's terraced up like ours is. You want to go to the next one? This is one that is, you see, they all seem to have a shell over them with sound equipment, lighting, and that type of thing. To the next one. Uh, this is one that uh, is the, you see, uh, they all seem to have a shell over them with sound equipment, lighting and that type of thing to the next one. Look back, uh, this one I really like because it's uh, really looks like it's on a river similar to ours. But you can see again the canopy and those types of things. So, uh, and then the last one is just what I call a ten thousand foot. View of maybe what ours could look like if it gets revamped. Again, this is just an idea as Brian said, this is something that could embrace all the community and that's the project guidelines. So, uh, we have been talking with Jonathan Griffin initially about it and he suggested that we bring it to the commission. Uh, the nominations need to be turned in by April nineteenth, I believe, April nineteenth. So, uh, we, I have copies of the guidelines and the the um, paperwork to fill out, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, it's very simple. It's not very hard at all to fill out. You don't have to give specific dollars amount at this time. You give concepts, you take pictures of what it's like now and what you want it to be and explain narratively. Uh, how it's going to benefit the city. So again, this was one idea and I would ask that the commission maybe uh, consider this. And also if you have a better project idea, uh, get with us because I'd like to help Jonathan and Brian complete this application for our city.
And I'll, I'll close with this, uh, the, the main purpose for us bringing it uh, to everyone's attention in a public setting. Uh, is uh, because I brought this up with uh, with Rotary uh, this past, uh, this past Tuesday. Uh, I wanted to just say that. With this project, uh, I think a united voice is going to carry a lot more weight. Um, and a lot of these communities, I feel like there will be applications coming from multiple uh, groups with multiple agendas. I think if we can. Come to a, a fairly unified voice, um, it will carry much more weight. The more applications, the better. That's one of the situations where the squeaker the wheel, the better it's going to get greased. And I think we should have a lot of success and we can kind of come to terms uh, with something that will definitely benefit the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's an awesome idea. Um. Commissioners, any comments?
I wholeheartedly agree with um, your closing statement. I think it's something, um, a unified voice, um, coming as a fist with the synergy behind it. Um, and I think it will be a good look for our community being that that amphitheater. Is you utilize um, frequently throughout the year. Um, to have that there, I think it'll be something beneficial. So I wholeheartedly support it and thank you for bringing it to us.
I, I too, I wholeheartedly support it too. I think it's going to be um, a centerpiece or whatever and it's something that we. We dearly need it down in the riverfront because we do have a, a number of events that we have um. Annually that it would certainly be a benefit to our community. Uh, and also thank you for pouring back into your community, being part of Putnam County and. I'm pouring back into the city of Palaca. So thank you and thank Lowe's for what you're doing for us.
Thank you.
I just want to share that I share the same sentiment since the um, the, the rest of the commission and thank you for. Again, as Commissioner Bohr said, pouring back into your community and I think that will be well utilized.
Thank you. Thanks Commissioners.
And so again, appreciate that. Thanks a lot, Mr. Manager. Um, for uh, for considering, for considering the city and then for definitely having that passion. And also thank you to Mr. McLean as well for being here. And so we definitely appreciate you. Commissioner Jones, you got anything else?
I said it, ditto it and let's get on it. Try to make it happen.
Mr. Mayor, it's, oh, I'm sorry. So, um, may we continue to work with Jonathan through the city manager on this?
I think you've got a, I got, I think you've got a, it's super consensus at this point.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Well, a- again too, thanks. Thanks for what you're, what you're doing for us and a lot of times. We are recipients of things and if there's anything that we can do to help you, just uh, let us know.
Spread the word, uh, we'll get it out there and spread the word. That'll be the benefit.
Thank you.
Anything, Mr. Holmes or Mr. Griffin? Thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Askew Bickers. Sir, yes, sir. You can actually just pass it, Mr. Holmes, he'll pass it up.
Askew Bickers, two zero seven North Eighteenth Street, Palaca. In front of you is a copy of invoices for water and sewer. And I was looking for an explanation or accepting to justify the increase of garbage for five hundred percent. Water is a hundred fifty percent. And I just want to know what is it that costs that much in an increase in a short period of time? The next thing. Who pays the cost for? Police escort for funerals?
Who pays the cost?
Yes.
I guess it depends on, it depends on the services that are requested.
No, okay, when a funeral, in a funeral possession, there are escorts for the, for that. Is that free? Is that paid for?
Typically, it's typically paid for in some manner.
Yes, and it, but uh, does the funeral, uh, home would pay for that or does people pay for it?
Most of it's coordinated with the funeral director.
Is coordinated with funeral director?
Yes, sir.
They are paying for that.
What's, what's the, what's your question?
Uh, the funeral, uh, director, is he paying for? The film, uh, uh, director, is he paying for the escort for the police department?
He would typically coordinate with the, the chief of police is back there in the back. So typically it's coordinated with the police department as to what services are necessary. Is there a rationale or something to the question?
No, I just wanted if, if that was something that was given to the uh, to them, I was something that was paid for.
Typically coordinated with the police department.
Okay. Okay, on this bill here before you, the garbage at one time we see there's a thing in an invoice here for twenty sixteen and those for twenty uh, twenty. The garbage in twenty sixteen is forty five fifty. Now it's twenty one, two hundred twenty one dollars. That's for the uh, container. I'll be trying to figure out what's the justification for an increase of five hundred percent.
You've had a, you've had an increase in rate structure based upon the size of the meters. There've been adjustments. Throughout the course of the last six years and probably the last twenty six years. Um, based upon certain things are in place. The most significant. Change in rates came about when there was a change in the rate structure based upon the amount of days that you have. Garbage pickup. Do you have, are you getting? How many days a week are they picking up from your dumpster?
Sometimes I don't get any in a week. Sometimes I get once, twice a month. After recovering and requesting to be done.
And so if you want to get with the rate structure, um, there has been a significant increase based upon certain rate structures that are in place and what your collections are.
For the garbage dumpster only is what I was talking about. He's charging two hundred twenty one dollars for the dumpster.
Well, I, I pay the same thing, but if you're getting six or seven days service, then the rates, the rates have been adjusted based upon that. If you've got. Various size meters, then the rates have also been adjusted based upon that over the course of time. And so those are all things that are there. If you actually want to get more information, you can either talk to uh, Mr. Griffith who's here now. Uh, who's familiar with the process as well, uh, or you can talk to the public works director. Both of them can kind of give you. Um, they can give you a chronology of when the rate structures changed, but they didn't just change uh, in the last few months. They've changed over the last few years.
No, it would, but I realized it changed in twenty sixteen. That's been four, four years ago.
Yes, sir. Um, and so we're four years later at this point and we're all kind of footing that bill.
No, see. I was closed March, April, May, June and July, but yet I had to still pay that because I had no service whatsoever.
Because it's a monthly service bill. I get, I get charged. I've used zero, I used zero gallons of water and I paid a hundred thirty bucks for water. So it, it happens like that.
Yeah, but see, it's like you don't, you can't dump anything because there's nothing to dump.
But if you don't turn your channels, they don't, they don't give you free cable either. And so.
I don't watch cable.
So, uh, your time is up at this point. If you want me to, I'll get with you or I get, or you can get with Mr. Griffith and we'll make sure we kind of deal with it. Yes, sir. Anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one else.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
There's nothing in the YouTube chat. We don't have any calls. We're going to go ahead and close public comment at this time. And we're going to move forward. I've got one item that I want to take out of order and he's been extremely patient with this. I've got Mr. Deandre Jones. Uh, who's on the line with us today. Um, and he has brought forward um, a, a great grant opportunity for us, but I. But there's a short timeline on how we can apply for this grant and. Um, and I, I, I would, in order for Stephen to be able to hear about it, we have to take this item as an emergency item, that grant application. Uh, we'll call for coordination of multiple agencies coming together and we only have a couple of weeks to get that in place. So. Um, if I'll entertain a, a motion for us to be able to take this item as an emergency item so that we can hear. So, so move. There's motion on the floor in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries. Mr. Jones, if you can, thank you for being here with us and for thinking of the city of Palaca.
Yes, sir. Uh, first thank you all for allowing me to uh, be an emergency item. Let this item be an emergency item. Really just happy to speak and bring this forth tonight. Um, so I brought it to the mayor's attention earlier this weekend. Been making a lot of calls to um, local municipalities. Um, that this grant has been made available. Um, and before I get started, um, also want to introduce myself. Um, my name is Deandre Jones. I'm the owner and operator of Organized Arts. Uh, we're based out of uh, Atlanta, Georgia. So I am calling you guys from Atlanta, Georgia here. Um, and primarily our services are public relations and marketing. Um, we work on a plethora of public engagement campaigns throughout the South. Uh, we work with nonprofit groups mainly. Um, so to get into the grant itself, I want to. I want to know, can I drop the link to the actual grant in the chat? Is that the best way to share it with you all?
Yeah, that's fine. Yes.
So I've dropped, I've dropped the link that directly, um. Is the grant notice that came from the Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, and, and this grant was uh, recently released a couple of weeks ago. Um, that is a part of the White House's national strategy uh, for the COVID nineteen response and pandemic preparedness. Our administration has announced uh, an investment of two hundred and fifty million dollars uh, to localities. Uh, this is particularly for health literacy grants, um, to particularly. For to outreach for racial and ethnic minority, rural and other vulnerable populations. And the specific goal of this grant is to make sure that we actually come out of this pandemic better than we came in. Um, you know, as our government rolls out vaccines, as we are, you know, recovering from, uh, you know, this pandemic. Uh, we want to make sure that folks understand, uh, you know, what we're up against. We want to make sure organizations. Our local public health departments are armed with the tools, the education and the literacy to reach the folks that they need to reach. Um, as you can imagine. With a lot of resources coming down from the federal government, um, this one is particularly unique. Um, you know, recipients of this grant are expected to develop a this, this uh, disparity impact statement. Using local data to identify racial and ethnic minority populations at the highest risk for health disparities. So when we're thinking about this grant, we are targeting our most vulnerable folks in the community. And I think we all know tonight. How bad it's been uh, for folks, how much it's affected our workforce. How much stress has been on the city and our public health systems and our schools. Um, and tonight I'm thinking about those folks in Palaca uh, who are suffering and continue to have these challenges. Uh, so with this grant, um, it is actually due April twentieth, unfortunately, uh, with all good things, they are hard to get to. Uh, but there are multiple awards. Uh, currently there are thirty projects uh, for urban communities available. There are also forty three projects available. Uh, for rural communities. Uh, so from my understanding, from my reading of this grant, Palaca falls into the rural category uh, for this. And there will be up to three million dollars uh, available for Palaca to utilize for the next two years uh, to do this outreach. Um, so that is the gist of it. Uh, again, this is coming from the Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, this grant must come through a municipality. Um, it is pretty urgent, but I think it's pretty important. I think it's an amazing opportunity for this city to come out of this pandemic again, better than it came uh, literally just a year ago. Uh, when we came into this. So I would love for the city commission to uh, you know, really consider this. Think really hard about this, uh, commit your grant manager to look into this application. Uh, my company is also offering assistance through this process. So I know it's not hard coming up with this type of uh, turnaround. Uh, to get a grant, grant application like this and. So I'm also offering our services free of charge to also help get this through. Uh, so I've been having calls with multiple communities about this. Uh, so this is not my first call, first conversation. A matter of fact, today I just talked to the city of Albany, Georgia and also Albany State University. Um, officials and they are on board along with many other officials across the country. Because they're really thinking about the impact of pandemic and. And how we can actually come out of this and looking for every opportunity uh, to take advantage of anything the government is uh, really providing to us as a resource. Um, so I would be happy to talk more about this, maybe offline, but again, I've dropped the grant. Uh, the link to the grant in the chat box. Also, city commission, I hope you guys will take this up.
And I, I, just to add to uh, what Mr. Jones has said, we had also an opportunity to uh, to caucus with uh, Ida Wright. Who's a former dean of the School of Business at Bethune-Cookman University, who offer, also offered to land services as well. Uh, and, and she in, and invited the idea of a partnership with Bethune-Cookman as well. Uh, in order to try to push forward these items, um, the grant creates opportunities for us to partner with local nonprofits as well. And to be able to disseminate resources as they come in to different organizations throughout the community so that we can make sure that we hit as many people as we can. One of the things that I can tell you that I've learned uh, just through my bout with COVID is that. There is a distinct difference in the way that information is disseminated within um, vulnerable communities throughout the country uh, in various ways. And we want to make sure that. We do the things necessary to make sure that people who may be considered the least of these are getting the same opportunities and the same information, the same health. Awareness opportunities as it relates to the vaccine as, as, as others within the community as a whole. And when. You look at Palaca, our demographics, um, you look at our health numbers. This is, we're the perfect community for a grant such as this. And for an opportunity to really to be able to raise the level of health within the community as a whole by providing substantial information and other opportunities that could be lasting. And so, uh, I just want to thank Mr. Jones for thinking of us again, uh, and being here with us, um. Just to present it, just present this opportunity. Are there any questions from the commission?
Yes, I, I'm sorry. I just want to thank you, Mr. Jones. Also, this is Commissioner McCaskill for having an interest in Palaca. I do have the grant pulled up and I see that it is eighty six pages long and the deadline, I immediately looked to see when the deadline is. I um, really don't feel comfortable right now. I don't know where this item is up for us to make a decision tonight. However, I really would like to have the opportunity to review it, the criteria and everything. I mean, everything, it sounds great, like a great idea and I would like to have more conversation with you, um, about that. So that's my input. And again, thank you for your interest in Palaca and um, presenting this opportunity for us to have.
Anybody else for a comment?
Well, I just had one comment. Is there any um? Grant match that um, the city might need to be obligated to as it relates to this particular grant?
That's a great question. Um, as, as far as I've written uh, and, and read through that eighty six page grant notice. Uh, there is no requirement uh, for any matching whatsoever. I've also been on a call with the health, um. Department of Health and Human Services and they did not mention of any matching uh, funds needed from the city. Locality that.
Any other questions? And so I will say, I, 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 I think that. It doesn't cost anything to apply for a grant. Uh, the only thing it does is it creates an opportunity for us to be able to gain additional information. Um, and also to gain opportunity to provide um. What in essence could be millions of dollars in resources to this community as a whole. Um, and I think it's just a great opportunity. I think if we delay, we're going to miss it.
I, I don't have a question, but I, I moved to actually go ahead and, and seek this opportunity. Uh, we have terrific grant writers and we've been securing funds as long as there are no matching funds uh. That come up, I say let's uh, I must, oh, city manager.
But, um, I want to. The question was specifically asked about matching funds. My question is simply, what about administrative costs?
Granted, that, that's my question too. Thanks, Don. I was going in there.
Grant administrative costs would be something that depends on who administers the grant itself. It'd be something that could be built into the grant. And I, I've got an opportunity to read over the grant itself and those administrative costs can be in place. And I, I think that with, with this particular grant. Um, we don't necessarily have the staff in place to be able to, to administer to the level that it is. to administer to the level that it is. So it would be something that administrative costs would be something that would come out of the grant itself. And we could build it into the application.
And that, that is articulated in the mayor. You said that, that we can?
Yes, yes.
And I understand that he did say that he would provide free services. Well, how much work, you know, that that's going to be required? Because look at, I know the deadline is, is nearing us, but how much work is that going to require of our staff? Although he, he's willing to offer free services.
Mr. Jones is um, he, he's no stranger to hard work. He's no stranger um to the level of commitment necessary to put forth a stellar application. And uh, he's willing, you know, to step up to the plate because he sees the need for things such as this nature in our community.
Seeking, seeking grant opportunities. I mean, I'm excited about this, but just like, you know, I know it's an emergency grant. It's right here before us. Um. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Jones?
To finish my statement, uh, I said about the grant, our grant writers and uh administrators and staff. I, I suggest that we have uh Mr. Griffin and Ms. Tucker review it. If it's something that we could do, I say let's uh, barring anything that's going to hamper us to meeting the deadline or something that you see that it's going to be cost uh intensive to us, let's go for it.
I would like to make the recommendation as well that we bring our attorney in if that is your request to have our um Jonathan as well as Ms. Tucker. I would like to make sure that our city attorney is a part of that process as well.
Absolutely. Um, so with time restraints, I say let's uh, I motioned to go with those, with those, with those stipulations, go for the grant.
Oh, it, it's anticipated that it'll be a collaborative effort. So there's a motion on the floor to move forward with the grant application. There's a second by Commissioner Borum.
Can I, I'm sorry. Can I hear the motion again, please? I'm sorry.
The, the motion is to move forward with the grant application um to have both our staff, our grant staff um involved as well as counsel so that, so that we can move it forward. Um, there's a second by Commissioner Borum. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Well, just as long as it does not interfere with what we currently have, I know our uh grant um individuals, I don't know what their bandwidth is as it relates uh of shifting focus. Um, and that would be, I guess, the determination of the city manager and the um people who are currently um actively working on on grants and then maybe other grants that's in the pipeline. So uh, I'm not sure as to what the bandwidth is, but uh, that's my question.
So can, is, is anyone here to elaborate on that part? I mean, I want to go for this and I'm totally excited. But I just want to know about that as well. Jonathan, Mandy, or anybody here that can kind of do that?
Commissioners, um, I'll admit, I did not have a chance to read uh the grant document. I know Ms. Tucker did. But I can speak to uh what you refer to as the bandwidth or what I would say the capacity of staff to administer additional grants. Uh, we did budget this year for a city engineer um to separate the responsibilities associated with project management and construction administration. Uh, we are interviewing two candidates here pretty soon that that should help. Uh, but if it is possible to have administrative costs reimbursed within this grant, uh, we'll probably be looking at bringing on part-time staff or additional consultants to help to affect the grant if awarded.
Any other questions?
Wasn't there a commitment from uh, you spoke of Bethune-Cookman um university?
And I, and that's in line with what Mr. Griffiths has said. Um, that creates the same type of opportunity. We see this, I mean, and I'll just say, as far as this grant's concerned, I see this as an opportunity to create collaborative relationships. And at the end of the day, we don't, our, our staff is stretched thin as it relates to where we are. And they do grant applications across the gamut. Um, and at the, and there are opportunities for us to, to create partnerships with experts in the areas of health uh and experts in the areas of public relations um to be able to do certain things. And I think um that this creates really this kind of the perfect storm for us because we can actually create various partnerships with local organizations as well as other organi- organizations and universities to be able to meet the health needs of our community. And I think uh it, it's a, it's, it's kind of a, a no-brainer. And so uh, this is where we are. Any other questions as it relates? Um, any other discussions on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And what I'll do is I'll, I'll put you in touch with our staff as well as our council so that we can start to move forward and 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 build a team.
Yes, sir. I thank you, Mayor, and thank the commission for taking this up. Uh, we all won't regret it. Uh, thank you all. Have the night.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we'll move to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has items A through E. We're going to pull item A and bring it back at a later date. So we're, we'll be considering today items B through E. Are there any other items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed at this time?
B. I'd like B moved also, please.
Are there any items other than item B?
I see that we have um Ms. Sharon Williams on. So I would like, once we get to that point too, if they would like to say anything about the reappointment if approved.
Okay, and so is there a motion as to item C, D, and E?
Motion to approve item, you, you mean, motion to approve item C and D? And?
E.
No, see it, we're, we're approving item C and D.
There's no, there's no discussion for E. I just made a recommendation.
So will we motion to approve side of item C, D, and E?
See, well, well, you was pulling, somebody was pulling.
I pulled B.
Okay, well, motion to approve item C through E.
Second.
This motion on the floor, second by Commissioner Jones. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
What's this call? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Um, as it relates to item E, Sharon Williams is on the phone with us. She is on Zoom with us right now. Uh, I don't see, I don't see Dr. Evans on the phone as well. So Mrs. Williams, we want to congratulate you for um for, for another term with the, I want to congratulate you for another term with the uh Palaca Housing Authority. And um, we look forward to you serving, and we want to just thank you for the work that you've done and also um for coming in and stepping in during Mr. Futch's um end of his term as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, and congratulations and again for your second term.
I'd just like to say thank you to all the commissioners. Um, I'm looking forward, forward to continuing um serving on Palaca Housing Authority um board and learning more and service in the community as needed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And also thank you to, to Dr. Evans, uh, who's been um chairman on many occasions as well as a longstanding member of the Palaca Housing Authority. And so we want to thank him also. Next up is item B, five B was adoption resolution number twenty-twenty-one, R thirty-one, adopting guidelines for code lean reduction requests. Commissioners.
Yes, my question was, I know in the last meeting that Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Borum had some specific questions as it related to this, and I know that we had Don, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Holmes had given us, staff had given us a set of guidelines that we could use. Um, in the last meeting, there were some questions from Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Borum, and they were given direction, or all of us was given direction to provide a written statement by that first day. Um, I hadn't seen any of those requests or written requests attached to this, and I just wanted to make sure that before we move forward with this, that we had their recommendations or if we're going to go ahead and go what we had the last time and have um Mrs. Thomas or something give some input. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
My understanding is that the input that was given by the commission was incorporated into uh the final document. Um, that's before today in the agenda, and maybe Ms. Thomas um or Mr. Holmes, if you want to respond um to that, you're welcome to as well. Ms. Thomas?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, the suggestions that were submitted by the commission at the last meeting, I did include them in numbers, could you move it down some like ten, eleven, and twelve? And then the last two, um, I think that is number eighteen. Sunny, can you roll it down a little bit towards the bottom? Okay, eighteen and nineteen. I included those in those bullet points. Um, I sent to each of the commissioners, each of you um my proposed changes and see whether you had any input or any um additional information that you wanted me to add.
So, um, pardon me, I missed that mayhem. I think you may have sent it to my city email, which I hadn't had access to lately, and I've been using a different one. So that's why. So I apologize to everyone.
I, I apologize to you, Commissioner. I did not know that. I will get your correct um email and make sure I have that in the future.
Okay, thank you so much. With that being said, I really, um, I'm fine with it. I do remember writing down some suggestions on the last one. And if that's what you included, I'm all good with that. So thank you all so much.
Mr. Holmes, any additional input? Okay, you've, you've heard from council and as it pertains to this issue, is there anything else before the commission as it relates to item five B? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept item five B?
Second.
We'll, we'll take Commissioner McCaskill's motion to, to accept item five B uh with a second from Commissioner Borum. Uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. It's only like twenty seconds behind us. So, again, I want to just thank council and Mr. Holmes for the work that you did in putting that together. I think you also collaborated with Mr. Griffith and also Mr. Cutright on those issues as well. And so we want to thank staff for the work that you did uh in providing um at least some form of clarity as it relates to um code enforcement leans. And so um, I, I think it gives us a framework to kind of build off of as time goes on. In, in the world of codes, we're always going to end up with a unique situation that calls for us to readjust at some point. So um, again, I, I'm just thankful for um for us to continue to move that forward. Moving on to our regular business, item number six on the agenda is consideration of possible certification of the Palaca Housing Authority's annual five-year plan for twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-five. And so at this point, I've got PHA on the line. Um, Dr. Woods, are you available?
Yes, sir, I am. And it's actually twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two. It's just an annual plan. The five-year plan was uh approved on last year.
Okay, you can proceed at this time, and then I'll let Mr. Holmes go.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I think it was a, it was labeled by PHA as a five-year plan, but in correspondence that I received from HUD, they indicated that it was incorrectly labeled and it, and that it should have been labeled as a one-year plan. Um, so based upon what being, being stated now, this apparently is a, an annual plan. And the five-year plan, according to HUD, uh, was uh proved or a form was executed uh in, in January of twenty-twenty uh as to the five-year plan. So the annual plan then, uh, the only plan document that we received is in your agenda. Um, it was uh provided to staff with a request that staff review it before providing it to the commission. The commission request or the request to the commission is that the commission certify the plan. Uh, that's pursuant to a uh federal regulation that um the plan is to be certified by state or local officials as consistent with what the federal regulations can ter- term a consolidated plan um of, of the jurisdiction. So that's federal terminology. The closest thing we would have to a consolidated plan would be a comprehensive plan. And so the way we view this is uh from a consistency with the uh adopted comprehensive plan. In other words, is this plan consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan of the city of Palaca? And, and if so, then it was to be certified as such, and if not, then not. Um, when it was submitted to staff, um, uh, I requested that it be reviewed by Finance Department, Planning and Zoning, uh, General Services, myself, and Legal. Uh, and each of those departments gave a comment uh back to me. I then uh essentially incorporated or summarized those comments in a document that I forwarded to, to all of you back in January. We noted issues or concerns that we had uh for your uh consideration without comment as to whether they were uh fatal in terms of uh your um, your consideration of the plan. There have not been modifications to the plan since that time, with the exception that um a, what I understood to be a proposal that the water bills uh that are currently paid uh in a consolidated fashion by PHA were going to be uh broken out and, and billed to the individual tenants. And I understand that that proposal is no longer, or at least not at this time on the table. With the exception of that, which is mentioned in the summary, and the reason I mention it now is because it is mentioned in the summary, and I want to indicate that that concern at this point is apparently not on the table. With the exception of that, I'm not aware of any changes. Um, uh, that would address the uh items that are in the, in the summary. Probably the biggest issue that staff raised uh or concern that staff raised was the fact that the plan indicates that there was going to be a uh a, well, actually what the plan indicates in paragraph B three is that PHA had submitted an application under the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, and is actively engaged in negotiating a master development agreement for conversion of four hundred twenty-two affordable public housing units under RAD, uh, et cetera, et cetera. And our question, concern, or inquiry was uh, there was really no explanation in the document as to what that would consist of. Um, and and there has not been any, to my knowledge, any, any additional information submitted, at least not any kind of a, an amendment. So um, if there, in the uh, since there's not any additional information being submitted uh and, and I don't know of any plan to, uh, we, I've agenda this item for, for your consideration. It is a policy decision for the commission to make, not, not for staff to make as to whether or not you find the um plan to be consistent or the, the annual plan, as it's now being termed by PHA, to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. And so we put it on your agenda for your consideration.
Dr. Woods?
Yes.
Comment?
Certainly, as is required, it is a standard requirement by the federal government during our submission of our annual and our five-year plan that we submit to the city and our municipality for approval of its consistency in our case with the city's comprehensive plan. As would be desired to be able to provide any information specific to what the absolute resolve would be for the disposition of our inventory in its entirety, we are unable to do that until such time as we have in place. A master development agreement in place, the comprehensive public hearings that are required to ensure that our property's sustainability for twenty-plus years would either one, deemed to be, remain in place as was discussed exhaustively during a number of meetings, and or two, be demoed, disposed, and are redeveloped. The only addition that we have, and I think we recently, the mayor and I recently discussed, was fair clock units. Uh, as far as any other disposition. As far as any other disposition within our inventory, that won't be determined until such time as we go in and do the necessary environmentals and all exhaustive measures that take place. It is nothing that takes place within a day or two, three to five years even, but it is required that we forecast the agency's intent. RAD is a tool that HUD has placed in Housing Authority's hands to be able to extend longevity of its assets. And that is why we have opted as an agency to indulge, as was discussed in a number of meetings with a lot of officials, both within the city, within the agency and within the community at large. But as it is right now, that is a requirement. And you know, this process began October of last year. Our drop dead submission date for the agency is January 16th. We were compliant with that by December, remitting our plan on December 15th, minus the necessary and or needed certification, of course. But here we are today that it is on the agenda. And it has not changed from last year's approval to present date as it pertains to the agency's annual plan. That annual plan for today and this year falls within the five-year plan that was previously approved on last year, which means that from 20 through 2024, everything that will be remitted, barring any unusual or extraordinary occurrences and/or situational changes relative to our resources of funding, should be consistent with what was remitted in the five-year plan.
Well, and, and I'll be the first to tell you that I've gotten, I guess that articulation that you just put forth, I'll be the first to tell you that I totally disagree with what you just stated because what you brought forth initially is far different than what we have now. You, it was, you were not speaking of using a tool in a toolbox. You were speaking of actually putting a hammer and nail together and nailing this down. It's changed over the course of time. And my biggest concern initially was that once we got the first submission from you, it included documentation from 2016. And we asked for corrections to those documents. We didn't want it to be piecemeal. I sat in a number of meetings where at some point I just got tired of wasting my time and sitting in there because I needed clerical stuff to be put in place in the proper manner so that we could deal with it. Staff was given specific instructions. I talked to the city manager and specifically asked that the submission given by the Housing Authority be consistent with what was on the, in the written document. There are multiple places where that wasn't the case. From the standpoint of having outdated documents in place, I don't know if it's cut and paste or some error that was put in place from that standpoint, to the point that when we started talking specifically about minutes, in particular places where there were public hearings to be put in place, the minutes were not consistent with having talked about the subject matter that was in there. And so I had, I have concern of my own as it relates to the substance of what's being put in that document and whether there's compliance with those things as it relates to public meetings. And many of those public hearings that you were saying you had, there may be one resident or three residents and you were talking more about mold than you were about the particular subject matter that was supposed to be adhered to within the running document. And so those are places where I saw things. What I did from that point was once Commissioner Jones, who was your chair at the beginning of this whole process, once Commissioner Jones became the liaison for the city commission, I bowed out and let Commissioner Jones become, be, become involved with the Housing Authority in the process. But there was a point where the Housing Authority said they didn't even need the city for the purposes of approving the document. And then the next thing I saw was an email communication which says that we were holding up your process and that it was imperative that this thing be taken care of by April. Because it is, if the conversation that you don't need is takes place and you're going to go deal with this in Washington DC, then I don't even know why it's on our agenda. And so somewhere along the line, something's changed. And if you're going to move to a position where you're looking to change the manner in which you have 422 units or your 62 faircloth units, at some point, you've got to give us some information that lets us know whether your plan is going to comply with the comprehensive plan, which is the immediate standard of what you have in place. That's the piece that I haven't received back yet. And if I haven't received that piece back, there's no way then, in, that I can comfortably sign off on this thing, regardless of what goes on. Now, I understand and I'm not sure, but I understand that your RFP was rescinded because you didn't, I guess it wasn't finalized, the agreement wasn't finalized or whatever the circumstances are. And so I don't know if you guys are putting that back out on the street or what the case is. But if within this 12-month period, there's going to be any type of development within the city of Palaca or any attempt at development within the city of Palaca, at some point, you've got to answer the question as to whether this complies with our comprehensive plan, which is consistent with the foundations of what's in place with this agreement. If you continually shift the pendulum, you can't ask us to be able to answer the questions or to be able to approve the document because the document is fluid. And that's the big issue. Just give us the basics of what we need so that we can move forward. But we wouldn't be doing this dance since October if the music stayed the same.
I'm not cognizant of any in statements that were remotely made. I'd heard a reference made by the city manager that the agency was not in need of the city's approval. That did not come from my office nor myself. As far as what the agency intends to do as far as development, the city will be there every step of the way. There is no if and ands about that. And certainly the requirement to be compliant with the city's comprehensive plan, that is not only standardized by the plan in and of itself, but that is the very nature of the Housing Authority's existence.
I understand. That's, I guess that's why I've been perplexed for six months.
And I think if I'm not, if I may, Mayor, I, I think we did get some type of reply as to what you were saying to corroborate what you were saying about us holding up the process. If I'm not mistaken, I thought that email did come from the director and I may be wrong. I just, I don't, just don't have that before me right now. And then speaking about the public hearings, I do see where, as the mayor said, that there were meetings held with residents, but it was particularly talking about mold and it was all, everything was included in what was said in the meetings, but still there was no follow-up with that. So that's just my input on that. I'm kind of on this, on the same page with the mayor and that's all I have to say at this point.
I believe the reference to public hearings are being conflated with our residential meetings. Public hearings are not to take place until such time as development and/or the accompaniment of MDA and/or master development is in place. What we were having were resident meetings. Resident meetings did indeed cover a number of topics. And certainly mold may have very well been, but it probably was listed as mild due. But as far as our RAD intent and relocation and/or the whole nine, that would have also been part of the public discussion during our residential meetings. But resident meetings are not equated to public hearings.
Okay, and I do see, I do see where you do have a notice of a public hearing here on December 14th and did have those conversations with the residents during that time. There is no elaboration on it, no input or anything. And it seems as if it was, I'm not saying that it wasn't brought up at the time, but it seems as if some, some of the residents would have gave input on that. And they, and if they did, I just don't see the documentation. I'm, I'm going on the documentation that was provided and what was discussed in the meetings.
Any, any other comments or any input, Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Mayor, it is not and was not my intent to become adversarial in this process, but only to get information and follow directions the staff was given regarding the, the plan. All I have to review is what's written in front of us. I don't have anything beyond that. So for instance, with regard to the notes of the meetings, there's a, the, the plan itself, the document itself asks, did the RAB, Resident Advisory Board, provide comments to the PHA plan, not to other aspects of PHA life, but to the plan? And it says yes, and there's a narrative attached. So when I, those are the comments that we referenced in my summary in which there are some PHA residents present, some PHA staff present, but the plan is not discussed. Instead, maintenance issues, mold, windows, cleaning and that sort of thing are discussed. And so we just noted that in the summer and, and the same with the fact that the plan documented itself, the, the plan itself, the document itself, the form is outdated. It states on its face that it expired on February 29th, 2016. We noted that in the summary and I think as a matter of fact, the council contacted the PHA and they indicated they had a letter that indicated that this was the current form, even though it didn't bear the current date and that letter from HUD was attached, but it's not. And so all we did was note those discrepancies and, and then from there, of course, we did note the absence of any information about how the 420 units would be replaced. So if, if, if there's a question from that perspective, it, it was simply a matter of, of the, of the staff reading what we saw and noting inconsistencies and that's all.
Was there ever a point when the Housing Authority indicated to the city that they didn't need our approval?
Yes, sir. Well, the, the statement was made by Dr. Wood that he really, and there were witnesses in the room when the conversation took place, that he really didn't care whether we approved it or not. He just needed the city to vote, to vote on it, up or down. And that was, that was the statement. So we were at that.
I did not make that, I did not make that statement. You asserted that I, it had been said that someone or I had said that. I did not comment. I did not affirm or deny and never made that statement.
You're okay because you're not under oath.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
I'm always under oath, sir. The God I serve always has me under oath.
My question would be when you, we, and it seems like a lot of hearsay here, I don't know. But Dr. Woods, when you heard these statements, at what point or what actions did you take to reach out to city, to anyone at the city, the city manager or anyone to sit down and kind of get some of these, this information straightened so that we won't have these communication issues? And when Mr. Holmes provided these summaries, were you aware of this? I, I just.
No, I was not made aware of the summary until well after a Friday meeting that was held with a number of representatives from the city and my board chair, my current board chair, as well as my CFO were on the line. There were a lot of misrepresentations, a lot of misstatements, even though there was written documentation and video documentation to support my position with regards to what had been, what had transpired. Communications, when you, I believe fervently in speaking and communicating effectively, that is similarly not possible with the city manager because any and everything that is stated is either misinterpreted intentionally or misstated and misrepeated intentionally. And so, no, it's not a matter of being adversarial. I have since met with one, at least one city commissioner stating the agency's need to have the, its annual plan certifications attached to its annual plan that was remitted back in December. But that's, that's, I've spoken with the mayor on a number of occasions. He referred me back to, and he directed me back to the city manager.
Until you.
There's nothing more than miscommunication.
I do have one more question. I do have one more question. So when you realize and you all were in those meetings and you realize that there was some misinterpretation and miscommunication, at what point, aside of that meeting or after that meeting, did you make efforts to contact the city manager to get together with the city manager and council to try to get this information corrected?
I had not tried to contact council. I had made additional attempts to contact and communicate. It was in the office there, his office. I think within two weeks after that, the whole city hall had shut down for about two weeks or so. We met again next month. Meeting that I would share with you.
You're breaking up.
He's breaking up really bad. I can't.
To everyone, all parties being involved on the line, prepared by invitations and.
Commissioner Jones?
I'll refer to you. City manager, mayor, commission. The, the issue I have with the PHA and this plan, it's a multi-billion dollar plan that they don't have in this, this one-year, two-year plan or rather this five-year plan. I know it's absent of the five-year plan. I have a problem with transparency, okay? These meetings that have been going on with the residents is the only ones I have witnessed or attended have a lack of participation. I don't know, it was like a notice to the public. I know that we haven't had a thorough meeting with the city and the stakeholders that are involved publicly. And when I say stakeholders, I don't mean investors. I mean people who it's going to affect in the communities that these, that this project is going to be in their neighborhood. There are several issues that I have or questions, whether you do this after you get a master development agreement or now, and I, I, I would like for the questions to be answered now about a plan that we have 433 or 22 current units there with PHA. What happened or how do we house these people that will be displaced when this, when this, this transformation goes on? We don't have housing now in the city of Palaca. So tell me, those are questions that have to be asked because we're going to have to deal with it being a commission in the city of Palaca. So that was, that was a main concern that Dr. Woods failed to give me an answer to on numerous occasions when I asked about it. So the transparency part is part I have a real concern with. The lack of, of compliance with us where this, not, these projects don't coincide with our comp plan. And like you said, city manager, Mr. Holmes, the fluid, the fluid actions that he take at one time or another. And you know, we asked for a some, some, some summary and didn't really get the same summary as we got the first time. And the cut and paste, I have a problem with that because it appears that there was nothing, no fresh information given and nothing to answer the questions that our city attorney, the city manager had, as well as the mayor. So, pardon me? So that, those are my concerns. So, and I do recall that this plan does not have to be approved by us. I do recall the CEO, President Woods said that about the city. We do not, with or without our approval, his plan could be submitted.
I can see Mr. Hayes' hand, raised his hand twice.
Larry Hayes, Director Hayes.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I apologize. I couldn't find a feature to raise my hand to answer a question, but as I've been here attending your meeting, I wanted to listen in and try to see what information has been shared and, and if the field office can be of help at this point. So I'm just want to state that, but I don't want to interject into the meeting and less invited. But I wanted to just let you know I'm here if you need to ask a question. That's it.
Appreciate you. Thank you, sir, for being here. And, and, and I guess to pick, to go off of the information that I've heard, my, my biggest concern again is the consistency of the information that's brought forward, the truthfulness of the information contained therein, that document based upon the, the information that's attached to it to justify what's in place. We've got to approve this document in its entirety, not in a fragmented format. And at the end of the day, when, you know, when, when I get conversation that says one thing in a document that says something different, it gives me concern. And the crux of this whole thing is what our authority is, is to determine if this document complies with our complaint. A very simple process that shouldn't take six months to get done, but it does if things change and if the assertions continually change. And I wholeheartedly believe that until there's complete truthfulness in the things that are brought forward to this commission, that we won't deal with it. And the other part of it is outside of that, this form of a substance. If the format is flawed, then how you, how can you expect us to go through this document? And I've said it continuously to both the chair and to the, and to the CEO of PHA. Give me a clean document which complies with the standards so that we can have the ability. so that we can have the ability to do a real evaluation of whether this complies with our comp plan. But when you give us RAD and you're saying that you're gonna do this and there's an exception and it's not gonna, and James Day Long and Northside Home, James Day Long and Ragsdale are gonna be excluded from the plan, and it's a five-year plan which now restricts into a one-year plan, and then that plan changes, but it's the plan from sixteen. There's no way that anybody can, can approve it without those things being in place. So you have communication with staff who gives you a written document as to what the concerns are, and yet they're not addressed. And then you say, well, I don't need you. We can go to DC without you. But then you let, I guess you left DC and came back to Palaca. And so whether that's through Zoom or whatever the process was, but we find ourselves back in the same place. And now the city is being accused of being the holdup. We're not the holdup. We've done nothing but try to be an ally to the Housing Authority. I stand by it. I say it consistently. PHA is one of the most important entities within this community. You have the ability to change lives in a way that no other organization can. But we've got to all work on the same team and put the same jerseys on. And if we continually start creating this us against them mentality, it's not gonna work. And until you give us what you're required to give us in a clean format with the, where all the boxes get checked off and we can sit and evaluate it and say that this does or does not comply with our comprehensive plan, then you tie our hands. And that's just where I am. I don't, I don't, I won't do all the double talking that a whole bunch of folks may do to be politically correct. I just want to be open and honest that it has not been in a format that should be acceptable by any agency that has the skill set that your agency has. And so until it gets to that point, I don't even know how it made it to the docket, other than the fact that I think folks just got tired of dealing with it. It should have never made it to this agenda when it was in a flawed format. And it's changed so much that I'm confused now, and it's hard to get me confused.
Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I interject here?
Yes, sir.
Let me share something from HUD's perspective. As we look at the five-year plan, the five-year plan, which was the two thousand and twenty plan, was reviewed by the city. It was signed off. It was given a certification. This is how RAD starts. There in the initial plan, you would either put a notice that the rental assistance demonstration program is going to be sought after at some time in the future. And you put that in plan, it goes to public notice. That was done in the two thousand and twenty plan. It will never be spelled out until there are a large gamut of, let's say hoops and hurdles that HUD requires going forward. In the next year, Dr. Woods did, they submitted a plan which was mislabeled. It was inadvertently labeled as a five-year plan. And we, HUD, my office did not, was not present for the meetings that took place. When we reviewed the plan, the plan was mislabeled, we identified it. It is structurally sound, but it was mislabeled. We corrected and had those corrections done, but the certification that was there for the year before is the one that has to be there every year. So let me kind of explain the mere fact of what happens in RAD. RAD is a very complicated process, but it starts out with the PHA being, at this point, Palaca Housing Authority, makes a decision to take their old housing stock and to reinvent that stock with something that is going to not only enhance the lives of the tenants that are in it, but enhance the actual community. So the Housing Authority will come to HUD and will ask us at the field office, this is what we are considering to do. And then they now have to start meeting with different pieces of the puzzle. Part of that information is getting an environmental review. That takes a piece of it. Part of it is going out to public notice, and I've heard several comments about public notice. There are public notices, but for RAD, they are RAD-specific. They are, once you have a plan, you have gone out. Part of it is you have to go and procure a partner, because now you're entering into a business relationship. That procurement has to take place. That's down the line. So when that starts to take place, there are public notices, there's sealed bits, those things all come together. This is well down the line, but the first piece of it starts with communication. The communication to HUD is the annual plan. The five-year plan starts it, and then you're right, it's the certification. The certification is whether it's a consolidated plan, if you're an entitlement community, or it's a comprehensive plan. Those things come together, but it is where the Housing Authority and the local community come together and share what mutually you wouldn't build something in Palaca that didn't fit what the community feels like. So it has to feel right. So you start talking about, we're thinking about doing it, and you put it together. So there are a number of hearings that have to take place. RAD will not take place tomorrow. RAD may not take place unless the, there are grants, whether you can demo, dispo, what existing property you have. That has to go through from an environmental standpoint, which my office will look for your community. The city will take on and say, we're gonna look at a phase one engineering study at some point down the line and then sign off and say, the RAD project can move forward because it's environmentally safe to tear down these buildings and put new buildings up. I would then get a document called a seventy fifteen, sixty fifteen, and I'll sign off granting the, the process to move forward. It then leaves my office and goes to Chicago to the Special Application Center called the SAC. The SAC can look at it and say, are the units that are there, are they obsolete or will this be better? And I don't want to be long-winded. I just want, I'm trying to give a picture of how detailed RAD is. RAD is such a detailed process, the Housing Authority can't decide to just do a project. They have to bring the project, make sure it's comprehensively sound. And then they have to come through with HUD, and it has to make sense. Even to the fact that the rents that are there have to make sense. It has to be feasible for low and extremely low-income families to be able to stay in the development. And I heard a latest Commissioner Jones stated, what would happen to the tenants that are there? Once HUD approves that this is a sale project, everything is there and is financially fit, then another part of our, of, of the department would issue what are called tenant protection vouchers, assuring that every person who is in public housing receives a voucher to go have safe, clean, decent, affordable housing until the project is built. And after the project is built, they then have first right of refusal or to come back into the development. There are so many protections that not only my office, but the entire department work on to make sure that RAD doesn't turn into just a profit-making funding source for the Housing Authority. It turns into something that ensures that the, that the community continues to have a housing stock that's there. So I'm here today just to see if there's something that HUD can do to assist. But we don't get into the day-to-day business. We don't get into, we don't tell housing authorities, and we definitely don't interject into city business. I just want to share some information on, what I've just shared is probably a tenth of what would be a telephone book of information that would have to be ahead of trying to do a RAD project. But the first part is, we have to have a plan that meets the certificate, that meets all of the requirements so that we can move forward, and it keeps the funding stream continued to the Housing Authority. It's, it's not just a document that we just look at and push aside. It tells us the story. And it, after we get that story, then we can say, you've met this piece, you can move to the next piece. But it is a pivotal piece for the Housing Authority. So I don't want to feel like, and I hope, I, I'm not sounding like I'm, I'm interjecting into the business. I just want to provide some, from HUD's perspective, what is ahead if RAD at some point does happen? RAD is not a guarantee. RAD is an option that has to be vetted out even before it can move forward. So I appreciate you allowing me to speak.
We appreciate you and, and your, and for you giving us that, that bit of, that bit of insight as it relates to, to RAD. My, my issue again is the fact that when the, when the document tells the story, that the document tells the same story every time it's presented. And if the story keeps changing, then that's a problem, and that's why we're here six months after inception. And so, and I, and, and that's just where we are. And again, I, I think that the things that we requested were very simple. Things that should have only taken a short period of time to, to either correct the man or put us in a position where we can move forward. And, you know, we're six months later, and we're still talking like this thing happened yesterday. And that's where my big issue is, because the concerns that were raised, the minor concerns that were raised have still not been satisfied. And, and that's where my issue comes in. There can't, you can't trust a relationship if you can't trust candor. And at the end of the day, I just think that there's a great opportunity for this community to move forward. And PHA is gonna be a catalyst to that. And what I, what I look for is for the conversations to be clear and consistent. And if we can do those things, then we don't have to have these long conversations about a simple document to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. And to sit in this meeting and to waste all these precious resources that are in here today on something that's clerical makes absolutely no sense to me. And I'm not gonna beat around the bush because I think time is precious, and the more we waste time, the more it puts us in, puts us in a position of frustration. And the only thing I want is just for this document to do what his mouth says. And with the two of them lined up, then we're good. But you, you can't tell me it's raining outside and the sun's shining when I go there. And that's just my whole thing. And so staff was given a task, they fulfilled their task, and it's very simple, form of a substance. And it's just a matter of making sure that the information that we're given is consistent with what box he checks off, that PHA checks off, and that's all we want. We've had an opportunity as a commission to sit in during the RFP process and watch the interviews of the two responders with the RAD program. I've had an opportunity to go tour sites in Daytona where RAD projects were put in place. I, I think we got a pretty sufficient tutorial as it relates to RAD from Dr. Woods with the site visits, as well as some of the other things that were put in place, the additional conversations, but also from external resources that are, that also provided, provided information. It, it's not our position to, to try to deter anything, because that's not what we're trying to do. I actually think if the program is successful, it becomes a tremendous catalyst for us overall, because we're talking about putting hundreds of millions of dollars of property back on the tax rolls. That's not my issue. My issue is that if you submit a pant, plan that we're supposed to look at, and we've got two criteria that we, that we evaluate, that you give us to, you give us a clean document so that we can do our job, and that's it. And that's all we've been asking for the entire time. And what we get, what we get is, is confusion through inconsistent statements. And, you know, and, and, you know, typically when you're talking to three lawyers in the room, I think there's a great chance that three lawyers are gonna remember what's being said. And so, and, and that's where it comes up. I get people every day who tell me I didn't say it, and it's on an email, but I just won't present that email. So we'll just go from there, and we'll try to move forward. Anything else at this point? So we're here. This plan is before us. Mr. Hayes, what's the drop dead date on approval of this plan? I understand there was a January date. Has there been an, an extension by HUD as it relates to this plan?
No, sir. There are no extensions when it comes to PHA plans. And so there is a date, the plan has to be in my office to be reviewed. That was statutorily met back in January. We reviewed it, sent it back for correction and for certifications. The plan has to be approved by my office, reviewed, approved with certifications, no later than April one. April one is the actual date that the plan becomes insufficient.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And what are the implications if the plan is approved, if the plan is denied? What are the, what, what's the impacts?
Mr. Mayor, was that?
If the one-year plan is denied, what are the impacts?
At that point, the Housing Authority becomes out of compliance. My office, I would then be talking with the regional administrator and more likely the deputy administrator, the deputy assistant secretary, and there will probably be a penalty that will come off of funding. Because there, the funding stream there, at this time, we just finished doing funding for what's called operation subsidy, which is the money that is paid to housing authorities to manage their properties. They also have capital fund, which is a fund that is there for capital improvements, whether it's roof, new doors, new appliances, things along those lines. I don't make those decisions. My job is to try to make sure the things stay on track in the field office. But money has been appropriated by Congress, and then that money comes to the department, but it comes with statutory guidelines that have to be met. So if the plan doesn't meet the April one, then I'll have to speak with senior leadership, and then the discussion will go from there.
And then can the plan be approved with certain, subject to certain corrections being put in place?
As far as, let me make sure I'm understanding. The correction, as the plan speaks right now, what we have reviewed is sufficient. That's the thing I can say. The corrections that you want, being the city of Palaca, may want from the Housing Authority, there, the Housing Authority can do an amendment. There is a process where amendments take place. If the language in the document needs further clarification, that clarification can take place, it would then go back out to public notice, allowing the public to review the changes in the plan. So the annual plan here then can go back for a significant amendment. That's a possibility. That we would make because we reviewed the plan as it stands. So we reviewed the five-year and then what's going on for this year. But if the city and the Housing Authority, if there is language that needs to be adjusted, then at that time, then that could be an amendment or a significant amendment, depending on what is discussed in that plan. So that is a possibility there. But HUD wouldn't put us, I'm sorry.
But, but if that happens, the agency considers them to be in compliance still?
The agency would be in compliance if, if we receive a certification today, it would be in compliance. And then does a, an amendment at a later date, whether it's a month from now or two months from now, does a new plan? It's just a significant amendment, and then that plan comes to the office with certification to be, it then replaces this document that's coming, that's being placed in the system now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion from the commission?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I keep going out of your meter, not to be distracted. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
No problem. This is Commissioner Jones again. You mentioned about, when I mentioned about displaced residents, and you said that vouchers will be issued to every displaced person. But, but just to make, I want to make it clear that vouchers don't equate to a house or a place to live. But but just to make, I want to make it clear that vouchers don't equate to a house or a place to live. So you can issue vouchers and sometimes people have vouchers, but no one to present those vouchers to that have a place for them to live. Is that right or or no, in our area? Because we we had this uh. Situation once before with our high-rise building on the 100 block uh in Palaca. And we lost a lot of residents because they didn't have any housing. Uh, we had a hundred units. And uh, we only rebuilt uh a portion of those units. And so the question was what happened to those residents that were there just and was given vouchers? Uh, and never found nowhere else to stay. They end up being without a house. So that is a concern. It's a major concern.
And Commissioner Jones, that is a concern. That's why HUD has a team on multiple sides. It's a 360 approach. In the city of Daytona, Daytona is going to relocate in stages. Three hundred residents over in Mallory and Windsor, the property that's right on the on the shoreline. There's a relocation plan that has to be in place. When you're relocating tenants of Public Housing Authority. It's not just a plan to hand a voucher. It's a plan that has to have feasibility. That's generally done out of Atlanta. But there has to be a real plan in place. To make sure and ensure that every tenant is provided housing. And with at least amount of disturbance to their life and their lifestyle. So I can't guarantee you what that plan will look like because it's not handled by my office, but what I can guarantee you. Is that going through the the RAD process is that those are some of the things that make a project either a go or a no-go.
One of the key things that I think should be stated, Mr. Hayes, is that RAD, as the former board chair knows. Is requires that no family is displaced. Requires that no family is displaced. One of the reasons the agency was pursuing the. Recompense of its Fair Clock units was to ensure that we had property on hand in our inventory. To move residents to at phases to ensure that any redevelopment that may need take place. We had somewhere to send and bring our residents to because Mr. Jones is absolutely correct. A voucher does not equate to a residence. But we know that and we knew that going into our whole discussion regarding RAD in its entirety. First and foremost, it is not, it prohibits displacement of any family. Secondly, the agency had Fair Clock units, which would then lend itself to be a transitional housing. Even albeit temporary for any existing residents that we could transfer to. So I think it need to be understood that RAD does not allow for displacement of any residents.
Well, it does not. It be that. I don't know how many around remember urban renewal. Uh, RAD is not urban renewal. That is not a plan without an ending. Uh, there has to be a beginning, a middle, and an end, and that's the difference in RAD is that. HUD has learned from the past. And is trying to help build new communities that can sustain. Because the the amount of cash or the amount of funding coming from HUD for public housing is dwindling. The housing stock is just getting older too fast to maintain enough funding to come through. Hey, heck. We were fortunate in this in the bill that was just passed to get $5 billion for emergency vouchers. Which is incredible. These vouchers would be funded for not the next nine years to hopefully protect families that are going to be displaced. But unfortunately, we don't have enough public housing and the public housing that we have, yeah, it's not sustainable. So RAD is one of the tools to help communities stay vibrant. And to give our citizens the best chance at a life in. Not just decent, but very decent and affordable place to raise their families. And to become. A a community that's thriving. Right? That's what it's about. And for us. We're trying our best to to do as uh what do we can for our portfolio. And we hope and and we hope that we continue to do that. But I can tell you, I've I've never had a plan. Not meet the statutory deadline.
We've never had a plan in this in this not be be submitted in this format. So um, we're both at our first.
Yes, sir.
Any comments? Any other comments from the commission at this point?
Seeing none, no.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel, you're breaking up.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just have one question. Uh, Mr. Hayes said that they amended the plan that HUD, um, the PHA. Initially submitted. Have we received the amended plan from? That HUD amended and submitted back to the PHA?
It was a correction. The the plan was submitted. I'm sorry, uh, ma'am, Ms. Thomas. Uh, or or your commission, I'm I'm not sure. I can just see your name, but the plan was submitted.
City attorney.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh. Attorney Thomas, uh, the plan was submitted improperly. When I say improperly, it was misstated. There's only one five-year plan. That's for and everyone had a five-year plan in 2020. Uh, the plan that was submitted in 21 should have just been submitted as an annual plan. That's all. So we sent.
That was the only correction that uh um that the Jacksonville HUD office made? Was whether it was a five-year or an annual plan?
It was a five-year plan. It was a not a five-year plan, but an annual plan. So that correction. It was missing certi- the certification itself. Uh, and if there was anything else that was there, again, I don't review the plans. My team reviews them. But to my understanding, that was it. I understand that there are some questions about what was in the plan. But the plan follows the guidelines that the previous plan, the five-year plan that was approved by the city. In 2020. Has the same information that follows through in 21. But. The RAD piece is different. The RAD piece is just a element that's talked about. Then it gets expanded upon as it starts to get developed. And I think maybe there's, I'm not saying there's a loss of translation, but there's. What I'm hearing, public hearings and discussions, there's a public hearing when there's a document presented to HUD. That's the plan, but RAD's actual plan. That's different because there is a specific set of meetings that talks about. This is what we're considering. This is how you will be affected. These are the things you need to know and these are the comments. And then they have to gather, being the houses, right? Have to gather that information for HUD to review. And that's a series of meetings, not just.
So you're advising the commission tonight that the only issues that um HUD had. With the plan submitted by the PHA was the title and the cer- the missing certification. Is that correct?
Yes, certification, title, dates. It it seems minor, but it 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 really isn't because.
I'm just, I'm just making sure that we understand. I just want to make sure that the commissioners. Understand that that's what you said the issues were with the plan that was submitted that was amended. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes, do you have anything else?
I won't say anything else.
Anything else from the commission?
Well, I'm I'm still confused. It sound like it's um. They they have everything that HUD needs to move forward. And for us, it's just uh making sure that they provide a um. Complete um. Application for the development for the for the one-year plan that we're approving for right now. That we've already approved the five-year plan in 2020, correct?
We have approved the five-year plan in 2020, yes. But I I I guess the only thing I would say is a true and correct. Plan, one-year plan. So.
So what will we need in terms of the amendment that they need to make to the application to. Clear up anything that the city would need so that. We can make a better informed decision because is there something that we need to look at once they. Or we can improve, we can approve what we currently have with the amendments?
Do you have that email list that they were provided, the list they were provided with with the corrections?
I have the summary.
That outlines all of the. So it's basically the corrections needed for us are outlined. Is the what the concerns are in the concerns are in the summary.
Ma'am, I asked if that was what Mr. Holmes referred to that he asked for back in January?
The summary was. The summary was provided back in January, January 12, 2021. And uh. Then there were subsequent conversations, but. The and and the summary, the concerns raised in the summary remain unaddressed. With the exception of, as I said, the summary does reference the fact that. Uh, a representative of PHA. Whose name I won't call went to PGA and told them to be prepared to make individual billings to about 440 units on April 1st. That that is noted in my summary. Subsequently, I'm told that that was just a uh thought. That it wasn't really intended to be a an actual plan. But other than that, um. The other concerns that are raised in the summary ha- have not been addressed. And from what I'm hearing, it it doesn't matter. Uh, and that's what I had asked upfront. Does it matter? I mean, are we being asked to look at this? But it doesn't really matter what we say. For instance, when it says that the plan. It has been discussed with the residents, which it does say. And again, all all my training is to look at what I see and interpret it the way it's written. And when it says resident advisory board comments, did the RIB provide comments to the PHA plan to the PHA plan? That's at C point three and that's check yes. If yes, comments must be submitted by the PHA as an attachment. So I look at the attachment. Just pick one of them. It's in the in the packet that you have and it says residents concerned Madison Court dash AMP 11. First bullet point is annual plan meeting was held on 11, 10, 20, 11 AM in the community room. Overall, the residents, overall, the residents are fine with where they are and how the apartments are being maintained. Is that what you call a plan meeting? And then it says a list was taken for those that want a Thanksgiving Day dinner on 11, 24, 20. Is that an annual plan meeting where you discuss what the agency's next year plan is? When I looked at it, I didn't think so. And then it says maintenance concern apartment B 17 has a mold issue. A resident was told that there is probably too much moisture in the air. Mr. Hobbs is looking into finding a product that will help control the mold. Two, shower and bathroom sink has a slow flow. B 108 has a mold issue. The resident was told to use a baking soda paste to put on the mold and crack a window when showering. I'm sorry, but when I looked at that with my training as a lawyer, I didn't see that as an annual plan discussion. With the agencies, with the residents being an opportunity to provide input and comment as to. What the PHA's plan was, whether it be one year or five. And so that simply, that represents an example of the concerns that we put in the summer. Now, if that doesn't matter, if if you just have to put something in there and call it a plan meeting, then so be it. I mean, as I said, I'm not the never set myself up as the arbiter of what this plan is supposed to say. So with that in mind, the summary states the concerns, Mr. Commissioner. And if those concerns are irrelevant, then so be it. As a matter of fact, I even called HUD to find out, are we wasting our time? And is my staff wasting its time in going through this document, most of the exhibits which are not properly labeled? They don't correspond to what's in the plan. Again, my training, your exhibits relate to points that are in the plan. And so I called HUD and said. If it if it doesn't really matter. If we're just supposed to rubber stamp this, then just tell me and we'll we'll stop spending time on it. Um, so, uh, you know, and I I won't, I said I wasn't going to, but Dr. Wood seems to have a. A plan of his own and that is his best defense is to attack me personally, which I have not done him yet. But if uh, you know, in terms of his statements about misrepresentations and miscommunication. All I can say, I wasn't the only one that heard the statement that I mentioned. Not even sure how relevant that statement is at this point. But again, it's not, it not, it has not been and is not my intent to try to create an adversarial relationship with the housing authority. I was simply doing what I was told to do.
Commissioner LaCascio, point of clarification. I never received that plan from the city. That that response, that summary.
And when you realize that, and my question again is that we realize all this miscommunication was going on, what did you do? What actions did you take as a director? And just to um piggyback off what Mr. Ho- Holmes just pointed out. I understand that those were residential meetings that you were uh, you know, talking about that you all held. And that's what I I was able to look at and 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 kind of talk about what was presented to me. And if you all did talk about the plan at that time, I just find it hard. To believe that none of the res- residents elaborated on it. That's what I was referring to, what I saw. And then I wanted to concerns, uh, one of the things that also concerned me is that there are. Ri- Ragsdale, the Ragsdale community was so large, huge, but no, not one resident attended the meeting. Um, and Mr. Commissioner Jones did kind of hit hint on um that, you know, they were, the meetings were not well attended. Uh, we don't know if it was like of how it was advertised or put out to the residents. But that's just kind of, I don't want to prolong this meeting, but. Just just kind of saying what Mr. Holmes has talked about is what I was referring to. And what actions did you take as a director when you realized that all of this was happening, that there was some misrepresentation and missed, you know, miscommunication? So thank you. And and did you make efforts to reach out with to Mr. Holmes and and attorney? You know, when you realized that this was happening?
The meetings that I mentioned earlier are the references and attempts that I made. As far as resident attendance, those meetings, that does vary. And it varies large and wide, but that is customary within our communities nationwide.
Any other comments? We're we're at a point where I think this horse is dead, so we can stop beating it. Um. I'll entertain a motion. Or additional discussion?
I move that we uh. Lean on the. The advice of our attorney and our city manager and uh what was requested, until we get what was requested, uh. We don't approve the certification.
Second.
Second.
There's motion on the floor and is there any further discussion of motion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. So, Mr. Hayes.
Yes, sir.
Would you be able to provide us with maybe a contact number for your field office? Uh, so that we can speak to you again?
Yes, you can. Okay, my personal cell, my HUD's cell phone number is 202. We're not working in the field office right now.
Okay.
Number is 202.
Okay.
Six one. Forty-two, forty-five.
Six four one?
No, no, no. Uh, two oh two, six, three, one, four, two, four, five.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Moving the agenda forward at this time, um, and I guess I'll I'll, as we deal with that. I I guess the question to the commission is, is if. PHA gets with staff. And they're able to come to some. and they're able to come to some resolution. But the commission, is the commission going to be willing to come back to deal specifically with this issue?
It depends on when, mayor.
We got to do it before April 1st, if at all possible, if they can remedy, if they can remedy the anomalies by before April 1, which I don't know what it would take for them to, um, amount of time it would take for them to get that done, but if they can do it expeditions, I'll be, I'll be willing to come back to the table.
We'll address it as it comes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I have no problem with that either, this is Commissioner McCaskill.
I, if I would, I'm going on vacation next week.
Understandable.
It, we will, we'll address it as it comes. We will, we'll make our best attempt. Let's move the agenda forward at this time. Again, thank you, Mr. Hayes and Dr. Woods. Moving to moving the agenda forward at this time, we'll go to adopt resolution 2021 R 33, supporting Bartram Trail Conference approving the city of Palaca's affiliate membership, appointing a member of the city commission as a representative and authorizing the Bartram Trail Conference organization's use of the city seal. We, Mr. Carr, you can come forward at this time. Thank you for your patience.
The purpose of this affiliation is just that to establish
Mr. Carr, I'm being told your microphone's not on.
Smash the button right there on your mic. Is it lit up?
That's good. And it's to to establish an affiliation between the city of Palaca, because this is really where the Bartram Trail in Florida started. And and all we've had St. Augustine already become an affiliate and and so we're expecting Jacksonville and and all to to do the same. But we thought that really y'all should have been the first to do this, but that's what we're doing. Basically, what the affiliation is, is an agreement that the city of Palaca will support the Bartram Trail Conference in the effort to become a national recreation trail, which would obviously be beneficial for Palaca as far as eco tourism and so forth. And then what Bartram Trail Conference will provide to Palaca is all of the information as we have to build the Bartram Trail. We're having a symposium here, April the 18th during the St. John's River Bartram Frolic that will be largely run by the Bartram Trail Conference and we'll have people from all over the country coming in to to see and hear that. So it's just a relationship to between the city and Bartram Trail Conference. And we would advertise you on our websites and so forth as an affiliate, as the other 15 affiliates that are currently on there.
And everyone's had an opportunity to review the resolution as it relates. Are there any concerns from council or city manager? Nothing from council, it's here, not in their head. Any questions or concerns from the commission? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
This is motion on the floor and a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. So again, congratulations and we appreciate all that you do.
Really appreciate it. Thank you very much, yeah. Want to extend invitation, our VIP frolic will be Friday night, 15th, I believe it is, at the River Center. So we'll get your invitations to all that good stuff. All right?
Appreciate you. Thanks a lot. Thanks, thanks to both of you gentlemen.
Sonny has something. There's a question, what commissioner is being designated as the representative?
We haven't said at this point. Is there a volunteer? Second. Wait a minute.
I'll, I'll accept if that, I'll, I'll take it.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Commissioner Campbell's attending. And Commissioner, I'll spell you if necessary, because I'd usually attend as well. We all do. Moving forward, directional reopening and issuance of special events permits, Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Hopefully, Eddie, is Mr. Cutright still on the Zoom call? There he is, good. So we have a number of we have a large interest in several events coming up in the very near future. Of course, we have the Wolfson Bass Tournament coming up. We have other events, including a number of parade, a number of events that Mr. Cutright had mentioned more specifically. And we wanted to get more direction from the commission as to the commission's desires regarding reopening. And with that, Mr. Cutright, do you mind mentioning some of the specific ones that have basically been applied for or that you've been made aware of?
Yes, I have no problem. On April, we have the Bartram Frolic, which Sam just talked to you about. The first weekend in May, we have the mud race. And then we have the Legion, American Legion's want to do the Memorial Day Parade. And then PYP want to do a mixer at the end of the month, I think, May the 29th. Most of these going to be category As, so they're going to be large events. So we need y'all approval or y'all guidance to what are we going to try to reopen the city to these things? Everyone has submitted a decent COVID-19 measure plan and everything is in place so forth from the special event meeting that we had with with most of them. Now we're just waiting on approval from the commission or the city manager.
I need guidance from the commission because obviously there are people. It it appears that some jurisdictions are opening up fairly widely. We saw though in Miami in the last week that there were some issues with opening up without restrictions. Did Wolfson's not submit an application?
Yes, Wilson is made the 12th, I mean, made the 13th through the 15th, they're three days, three day event.
So you know, Wolfson's traditionally has as many as 400 boats, 500 boats with all the attendant, I don't know that they will this year, but traditionally they have had and and there's attendant to that are the the parking of the boats, which you know means people running boaters, trailer truck drivers back and forth from where the boats park. There are going to be some crowds down at the at the waterfront. I'm not sure what they're proposing right now, but traditionally they do have at least a weigh-in down there. And then as indicated, you have at least one parade, correct?
Yes, Memorial Day Parade.
Sorry, Memorial Day Parade and then the Frolics. So, Mr. Mayor, we just, we need some direction from from the commission as to policy at this point.
Commissioner Campbell?
So. I think I think at some point we have to take the steps in order to try. And of course, we don't want to try at the sake or at the, I guess, the the hand of others getting sick possibly, but I do believe that we've had events recently that they you know, that we had events. But I I mean, I think it's something that we really have to take in consideration. I would like to see us move forward, but I would like to see us move forward in the most safe way possible. Of course, we won't be able to wholeheartedly determine the numbers. But again, I I think it's something, you know, sitting on this diet is that we have to literally take in consideration. I am very much aware of what transpired in Miami. I was actually tagged quite a lot of times in those particular posts on social media. But again, as a commission, we have a do, we have a duty, a duty to look at all of our citizens and not just some. So again, this is a tough conversation, a hard conversation, but it's something that we 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 have to have it so that we can move forward in some kind of way.
Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, so they've submitted the plan. I mean, we still have somewhat of controls in place as it relates to that. And if they have submitted the plans and our I guess if staff has looked at it and and approved the plan based on what we put in place already, we're not saying we're wide open, but if we could continue to move into this thing with some controls in place as best we can, I think those are the steps we need to continue moving forward. Look like things has flattened for the most part and from looking at the numbers. I haven't seen a major increase in anything as it relates to COVID numbers going up or additional deaths in this, in this, in the county. So other areas are opening up, but I do think if we have a plan, we need to strongly consider moving forward with 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 those plans in place.
Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner McCaskill, do you have anything?
Commissioner McCaskill has left the meeting.
At all due respect, she was feeling very badly and at one point wasn't even going to try to attend by Zoom and she made the effort to, so.
I understand. Maybe she, Commissioner Jones, you got anything?
Only, only when we consider these and it's for no particular group. I think we should consider and actually have that data in front of us as far as the numbers, how things flattened out, how it's affecting our community itself, maybe from Department of Health or whatever. How it's going to impact our people that have to enforce whatever compliance or controls? When you mentioned controls, I mean, are there any additional? Are we going to review these applications on case by case basis or what? Because you can't, you, we can't just say as a whole, yeah, we're going to open up because there are other dynamics to each event. Okay, so I know if the city manager already looked at it and and the attorney, and then they come back and say, okay, but we need you guys guidance on this. There are probably some concerns, so I just want to, I wanted to say that. Even in when our law enforcement officers, they're going to have to take part in some of this stuff, they're going to have to have coverage. So, you know, so not only just the participants that's going to be there, they're going to be obligated to be there. So, you know, so it can impact us as a city like it did when we had here in our building. But no particular group, but I think we need to look at it case by case basis and and actually have intricate, intricate details. So that's all.
And and I'll mention one thing if I could. The quandary we face is this, with a bass tournament, for instance, if there's a limited number of boats, like there was with Bass Masters Elite, and they put in, which I think started with 100 and narrowed down to 10 over the three or four days. And they put in place fencing to limit the crowd and they put in seating that's in pods of two and four, and they limit the number of attendees to the number that would fit within concentric or six foot circles. Well, there's, you know, that's, that's a fairly fairly set of restrictive controls. But with a parade, when we look at a parade permit, I don't know how you, I don't know how you do anything with a parade permit to put in controls. I mean, I don't know, maybe somebody's got some good ideas somewhere, but I I don't know how you restrict attendance, I don't know how you restrict points of access, I don't know how you restrict anything. And then, for instance, with Wolfson's, as I said, Bass Masters was 100 boats, I believe it was, I think it started with 100. And then I think the Road Evers tournament was 140 boats, everything under 150 so far that I'm aware of. But there's a big difference between 150 and 450 boats.
Two hundred at the high school tournament.
Sir.
Two hundred at the high school tournament.
Okay, 200 at the high school tournament, but even so, there's a difference between 200 and 450. So that's our quandary is we could tell Wolfson's, for instance, we need you to limit the number of boats and the crowds, but then that's going to affect their ability to raise money. And we all know that's, this is a money raising event for Wolfson. And I know everybody, it's hard to say that that's not a good event. So that's why we need, that's why we're in the quandary that we're in. We just don't think it's a decision staff should make without guidance.
Commissioner Board, you got something?
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, Commissioner Jones made a good point, but again, like I said earlier, the the staff will review those plans that's in place. And again, I I wouldn't recommending that we just go wide open in terms of just saying, okay, let's move forward. I I did state that we need to the submitting plans and we review those plans and act accordingly to those controls that's in place.
I would also, I mean, if it's proper, have some input from our law enforcement, our chief of police, because these are public events and what your thoughts are on them. If you could come up, chief, and you have your thoughts, you're the captain, either one.
We need EMS too, you know, the fire department as well with these type of event. Right, through the application process.
If I'm not mistaken.
That is correct. We we have our special events committee that goes over each event application to ensure that all those things are put in safety precautions before we even bring them to our city manager or we bring them to the commission. So each application is reviewed individually and looked at to see if the crowd size, if the event has the proper safety precautions. And Mr. Cutright has been doing a fabulous job since taking over that course of meetings to make sure that those things are either presented or that the, those things are on the application before moving forward.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
So I was, I'm sorry. So I was just asking with your opinion, that's good to know. And because this meeting is being broadcast, I wanted to get your opinion and get you on record saying, how do you feel about it? As far as, I I know that the committee, but your personal, as far as your personnel and how do you guys feel about going on?
Well, our stance on depending on what the event is and the size of the event, albeit large crowds right now and capability of our staff is something that we we don't anticipate or view having to control with certain standards. Again, looking at the event or looking at any event individually and what's been put in place basically lets us know how we're going to to address it, how we'll approach it, and if it's something that we can handle. But when we think and and as mentioned earlier, the events in Miami, when you think towards in things like that and having to be able to address it with staff, it is a concern of ours and we would, we go into and we sit on the special events committee as well. Captain Williams is charged with doing that, but we go into every, every meeting looking at what the possibility and how it may fit affect not only our local citizens, but from the safety aspect. So we address it from that standpoint.
So out of the events that have, okay, thank you, sir.
Make another comment, come on, Mr. Parsons.
David Parsons, 1113 Lee Street. I'm a board member with the Palaca Young Professionals, so I'm representing our group today. We did just, you know, we recognize, you know, there is still, you know, cause to be cautious. So as the organizers for the last Blue Crab Festival, you know, we don't want to do that now. We recognize that for for May, that's a little soon, a three day event, four day event. That's, that's a lot. But so what we would like to try is a one day, you know, just Saturday, most of the day, spread out along the riverfront, we'd have bands throughout the day. But we can also, you know, we've, we've planned for hand washing stations regularly, sanitizing stations, and then we'll also pack, pass out masks. But but we do know, you know, it's not the time for, you know, 100,000 people event. So we're, you know, Um, so we're, you know, straying away from the classic, uh, Blue Crab Festival name, which would draw people from, from everywhere, uh, all communities. So, um, one day, we, we've talked about calling it, uh, the Placa Wine Mixer. It's, uh, there's, there's a, a movie that it's kind of modeled after. It, it's just a good time, you know, farmer's market for people to, that could come walk through and shop local vendors, uh, just some food, some music, uh, real small, not, not, we're not going to try to, you know, overload on advertising and, and draw people from everywhere. We know we don't want that. Um, but we do, you know, we would like to try something and see if we can, you know, get things moving along and see, you know, what is the community response? What does, what are people looking to do? So that'd be our comment. Thank you.
Um, I guess I've been quiet on this one. Uh, I, I guess my biggest fear has always been, um, the overflow of category A events coming in at one time. I don't want us to be like Atlanta. There's a, there's a common saying that Atlanta, that COVID wasn't in Atlanta during All-Star Weekend. I, I think for many of us in, in haste to get back to some sense of normalcy and have things in place, um, we're planning larger bits so that we can get people out, even the county fair and some of these other things that were not necessarily in place before. We all need to look at what the numbers say, and there's a feel that COVID is flattening, but it's not. If you look at the data, and I just pulled up some of the numbers, in December, there were sixty-two to sixty-six deaths around the middle of the month. As of yesterday, there were a hundred and thirty-three deaths in this county. And, you know, there's so many people that subscribe to the fact that COVID deaths may not necessarily be reported accurately. But even if we put a coefficient of error in there, that's a lot of people. One person is too many and death is real. Um, within the last few weeks, we've had days of forty-nine cases reported. We've had mostly days of four to ten cases reported. Part of the reason is that people are really having those conversations. They're tired of having the COVID conversation. Um, I, I think the other part of it is, um, people are becoming complacent, which leads to the numbers doing what they're doing. I don't think Tallahassee's done a great job of ever having Florida close. You know, Florida and Georgia have been the destinations for everything and we continually, um, fail folks from a health perspective. I think the other piece of it is fifty percent of our seniors, based upon the numbers, have been vaccinated. But it doesn't, it does not give cause for us to relax to the point that we start to have everything we had before March of last year. I believe fishing tournaments are far different than a festival, simply because the weigh-ins don't necessarily bring that same level of crowd. And in tip, and in those situations, we're mandating that there's masking as they sit and watch that. The boaters are required to remain in their boats until they come up for weigh-in in their distance. Where they are, it's typically only two people in a boat and maybe a marshal. Those situations are far different. When we start seeing a festival and we believe that a certain number of people may come, there's going to be a gang of folks coming just because they haven't had anything to do in eighteen months. And so we have to be careful. Um, of how we approach these things. I, I think the only way you can approach it is on a case by case basis. But I, I'm personally resistant to us opening up category As from a festival or parade standpoint to the extent that we make thousands of people susceptible to getting the virus for the sake of them having something to do. You know, I, I just think it's too soon. I think we're having, um, we're increasing vaccinations and getting more information out and trying to make attempts to educate folks. But we still have people within our own staff on a regular basis who are resistant to getting vaccines or doing other things. And it's just a hard call. But I, I think the answer is part of us to trust staff, but I think the other part is to phase this thing in continuously. I don't think the answer is for us to say, oh, we're going to allow this category A and not this other. Because if we do that, then we're saying it's okay to have Blue Crab and bring a hundred thousand people in here. And I, I'm pretty sure a hundred thousand people are going to come in here. I, I, I think the answer is for us to look at how we can limit the number of people that we have in these events, create maximums and try to enforce that to some degree. But the reality of it is, is once you let, once you take the lid off, it's hard, you're not going to be able to control it. And a fishing tournament is far different than a festival. I continually say that. Um, so I don't know. What's the safeguard? How do you, how do you control in a festival, the number of people who show up that you never anticipated because they don't have anything to do? You know, we can say mandatory masking, but what happens when they don't comply? Because the governor has now preempted us from any enforcement. There's, you don't have any controls in place. And I'm not saying that in directing it towards anybody. It's just a, it's a question that has to be answered in order for us to deal with safety perspectives. Particularly since we're the county that typically ranks in the last two or three counties statewide for health. And so we've got higher rates of pre-existing conditions than most people throughout this state. And so we've got to be extra cautious because many of our citizens are vulnerable. And so as we begin to make these decisions, I, I just caution everybody to just make sure that we understand that sometimes the path to destruction is paved with good intentions. And while we want to do something good for the community, it could be disastrous. And the precautions have to be in place. And so I, I can't say I'm in any way in favor of us opening up major category As outside of fishing tournaments. And fishing is far different than festivals, anybody else.
My statement in the opening was to have this dialogue, um, so that citizens know where we stand. Um, not in any way, again, am I pro having these events. Again, we sit on this dais and we have to make some decisions. And sometimes our decisions may not come easy and the decisions that we make may come, or we may become undiscrетne. But again, we have to have that honest dialogue. But again, moving forward, I don't see, um, this being any different from if we're going to do case by case basis, which I'm perfectly, um, fine with, we still have to determine how, um, we proceed forth. Because you, you spoke of the, uh, the, uh, the, the fishing tournament, but we also approve the, um, Bartram Trail to do something as well. So again, we want to make sure that when we go moving forward, that there is a consistency, um, when staff bring something to us that we go by. Um, again, I'm not totally in favor with opening wide up, you know? Um, but again, we have to have some form of consistency when these, um, type of events or any event come before us that we go by.
Anybody else?
And I would say if this, I would say if we need to, um, I mean, because it is again, uh, something that we have to take in consideration. And do we, how, I mean, again, how do we move forth? But if this is something that we need to sit down and this be our sole focus, that may be something that we need to do as well.
I mean, that, again, I'm going back to my original statement, which I said, I think we really need to look at the, um, uh, again, it's, it's basically going back to say case by case basis in, in, um, the short, the short version of it. But again, I said that the court, I mean, the events, special events coordinator, the city manager staff, they review those applications. And they're making sure that the proper, um, protocols and measures are put in place before I think they just sending, sending it to the commission to make a decision. And, um, based on their recommendation, things are put in place. They put them before us so that we can help give them more guidance. Again, um, we, we're, I mean, we're in a place where we need to at least look and see what we have. And if certain ones cannot be approved and, and others can't be, I mean, can't be, well, that's, that's what it is. But again, they are putting those controls in place and I think we need to look at them again, case, they're all case by case.
Just think about the beginning of the comfort, uh, conversation where the city manager stated that he needed direction. So I feel that we're putting it back on him or back on staff when they came to us for direction.
We, we, we have to do it. I mean, and at the end of the day, it's not fair to put this on staff. Um, this is what we're elected to do. And, um, I think it's absolutely right. It's a difficult decision and I don't even know if there's a right answer. So, um, what's your question?
Well, I mean.
No, you're doing good. Uh, you're on, you're on task. You're on task. It's almost nine. You're perfect.
I just say, okay, well, we'll just continue to, uh, not have class A, um, events. Um, and continue with, um, up to class B with still the controls in place.
But we've had. We've already had class A events. I, I think the, the problem, and, and that's kind of, that's my thought press, process, but I, I think, I mean, quite honestly, there is no right formula because at the end of the day, you're not gonna, we're not gonna know. I think the only thing we, I think logically, the only thing you can do in this situation is take everything on a case by case basis and evaluate the safety plans as they come in. Um, there's probably not going to be any event that's going to make me happy at this point because I'm going to be scared of all of them, you know, and, and I, and my personal experiences kind of lead, lend to that. Um, and I just think that we all should kind of re, really keep ourselves out of harm's way. But there's a gang of folks who want to get out and do different things and they, and it's going to be different. But I think we have to just, I think the answer is just to approach it on a case by case basis. And the same way we review the, as opposed to putting these things on the consent agenda, we'll review them with a fine tooth comb to see if they comply. And they're scored from that checklist of things that we have in that, in that strategy as it relates to complete reopening. You know, um, I'm not, I can't say I'm in favor of that, you know, even when you look at City Hall, we, we're still closing City Hall. Every other governmental agency is open. And so, you know, it, it still protects us to an extent.
Well, Mayor, um, for sake of, uh, I think we all kind of echo on the same thing, um, in one way or another. So I would make the form of a motion that we would continue to review these specific events case by case, um, working towards a checklist that was actually given or provided to us, um, a while back on several occasions that, uh, Mr. Cutwright, uh, came up with and actually took back some of our overall concerns, um, with that document, um, at this time that we, again, just go by a case by case basis.
Second. It's a motion for a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, say, motion passes three to one. What's your vote? Motion passes three to one. So, um, we'll just continually review. So that's where we are.
All right.
Moving forward, thank you a lot, Mr. Parsons. City manager and administrative reports at this time. Mr. Holmes, you got anything?
Out of respect for the lateness of the hour, Mr. Mayor, I save my comments.
Anything pressing from staff at this point? I'd, I'd see there's only a couple of folks still with us. Mr. Cutright?
I just have one question. You said that for these events to be viewed case by case, do we need to send them to you directly with the measures in place so we can get idea of which ones you're going to approve or?
Continue on with your process. You've got a list in place and it still has to come before the commission if it meets. Only category As have to come before us. And so those are the ones that are going to be of most concern. And so if the category As are coming forward to us, then we're gonna, then those approvals are going to be in place. If it's a smaller event, then the safeguards just have to be met. Tracking. And if there's anything that creates angst, then it's still an opportunity to, to have that conversation with the commission, uh, through the city manager. Commissioner Jones, you got any? So I think that's where we are. Um, anything else you, Mr. Cutright?
I'm good. Thank you.
Taylor. Mr. Griffith is no longer on that. So is there any, I saw him. Is there anything else? Uh, Chief, you got something?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to thank, uh, Chaplain Mulberry for coming down and meeting with the staff for the past couple of days. It was a great time getting to meet him and, uh, I was glad he got to talk with some of my staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Chief. Anyone else on here? Is it, those are all our participants thus far? Mr. Krantz, you have anything for us?
Not this time. Thank you.
Counsel, you got something for us?
No, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Borum?
Yes, uh, real brief, um, the north, northeast, um, Florida legal cities, um, did send out, um, a couple of the checks to the, um, to Epicure, one Epicure and also one to, um, North Point Youth. Um, we had twenty-four cities, um, participating. They had about sixteen thousand dollars in the pot. So that was, uh, distributed between all, um, twenty-four cities at two entries apiece. So they got like three hundred and thirty-two dollars, um, per, um, dispersion. But in, in each city can submit two five oh one three Cs. So those funding seemed like they came in and they, um, arrived at at least North Point Youth. I got some feedback from them. So, uh, that's all I have.
Chief?
I just wanted to let the commission know. I received a phone call yesterday from Chief Dixon, uh, wanting to say thank you to the commission, to the city for the proclamation and the letter, uh, that, that accompanied it. So I did want to, uh, pass along those, those words.
And the, and the word we got, um, from, from Chief Dixon was that, uh, the, the folks in Miami really enjoyed the fact that, um, Palaca recognized him, that his hometown recognized him and, and then speaking to him, he was overwhelmed. So definitely, um, great thing. Any Chief, Commissioner Jones?
I just would like to ask this question. Um, and, and it's going back to what we just voted on. So just to be clear, where, where we were, were any prior to this meeting, right?
Correct.
That satisfy you, city manager? Because I, I see, I don't, I don't think that did. And I, I don't want to leave here like that.
Well, what, what I'm going to interpret that as meaning is that if we can institute safeguards, uh, in terms of limiting numbers and access, then we're going to go forward with it. And if we can't, then we're, we're not, but we'll, where there's time, we'll bring the decision before the commission. Unfortunately, on some of these, I don't know, there's a, there's going to be time like Bartram Frolics. I think that's already, I don't know about.
It's next month, April the fifteenth.
I thought we already approved Bartram Frolic.
Well, you, you, you agreed to help sponsor it. In front of Eddie, so we're going to approve it now. But, uh, but, uh, but, uh, you know, so we're going to approach it and that basically if there's time, we're going to bring it in front of him. If there's not, then we're going to try to apply those, uh, standards of if we can limit numbers and, and, and enforce safeguards and try. And if, uh, if not, then, then we're going to say no.
Did Bartram, did Bartram submit a category A?
Eddie, is that a category A?
It was a category B with measures, uh, I don't have right in front of me with the numbers, but it was a category B. So, uh, you within the, the, the realms of what you decided to do tonight, commissioners, but that, but Mr. Holmes is saying that I just need some guidance. I mean, because we get hit every day with different events asking to be done. And, and we said, put measures in place, we give them to put measures in place. I'm with you. I understand the COVID. I feel this, feel the need to be cautious. But we got to have some definitive guidance somewhere.
But even in, even outside of this, it still has to come. But even in, even outside of this, it still has to come to the commission. And it's still, when you essentially look at it as a case by case basis, only thing doing is collecting the information, going over the checklist. If that is provided to you and you feel that it's come, in the event, it still has to come to the commission and we still have a right to turn it down. So it's still essentially a case by case basis. And I think what's listed on the, uh, on the, the, the agenda is a reevaluation as we have been doing along the way. Um, since March of last year, we have been reevaluating several things. But again, ultimately, collecting the information, providing the commission with the information is essentially still the same thing as bringing it to us on a case by case basis.
We're going to do our best.
And, and I would like to just add that when we decide that we're going to have these events, we, I think we should also follow suit with servicing the community and our citizens as far as opening up city hall, opening up the gas authority. So all of those things are going to follow suit. So we can't say, well, you, you know, we're going to have a, a, a festival, but you guys still can't come into city hall.
And that's an interesting point because scheduled for discussion on the Gas Authority's board meeting this coming Thursday is whether or not to open up their, uh, lobby on days, uh, right after the billings. They're averaging about seventy-five people coming in in person to pay bills and/or ask about, uh, billings and billing questions. So to this point, they've been using a drive-in process. And I know that some of you know firsthand that it has stacked up traffic. And, uh, so they've asked about opening up, uh, the gas authority lobby. They don't have, they have a very limited number of staff. Um, they have only four people in the lobby. And you know their interaction with their, the people, the, the office staff and the folks in the field, their interaction is fairly constant. So if COVID gets in that place, it's going to be like city hall. It's basically going to be shut down.
And I think the only good thing about the gas authority opening back up is they actually have a barrier already in place. And it's been there, uh, before, beforehand. But, I mean, the reality of it is, it's no different than the police department. They've got a barrier. But at the end of the day, people are going to still be susceptible.
Well, what we had talked about doing was opening back up, uh, effective the end of the month. Um, and taking the autoclave down there a, at the end of the days during the first week of the month, when they have their peak numbers of people inside, uh, some of their people are getting vaccinated. Uh, they voluntarily, matter of fact, some of them already did, have had diverse vaccinations. So we're going to, we were looking at talking, discussing safeguards for the gas authority because they understand that there are people who are waiting in line and getting disgruntled and they want to open back up. So, and as far as city hall goes, we're, we're, we're letting people in, as you know. Uh, anybody that comes to the front door, we're letting in. Uh, we're just not, you just, you have to go to the front door and knock, but we're not refusing people.
So, so as if we were taking a vote tonight, which I thought we were going to do, my vote was going to be the, the vote. I just want to let you know.
You had the ability to do that at the time of the, the called question. And I, I, we, we did take a vote. You just didn't exercise your right during that vote.
Uh, Commissioner Campbell, we did not. You.
We did. There was a motion. If you disagreed with what the motion was, you had the opportunity to state it at that present time. So we did take a vote.
Well, thank you for that clarification. Goodness, Senator Campbell.
So let's do this. Um, for the sake of, on the next, and, uh, as we get direction at our next meeting, we don't have a meeting on the eighth, right?
You have a workshop on the eighth. Now you have a workshop, uh, on your, uh, status of the city, your goals and objectives. You have a workshop.
Um, at our next meeting, place on the agenda, direction again, we'll revisit the same thing as we have already committed to doing.
All right.
Um, and any, any issues that the commission wants to bring forward as it relates to, um, to COVID, we'll, we'll, we'll address them at that point, so that everybody has an opportunity to, to, to really get into the, the meat and bones of it. Um, if I was at church, I'd be saying the hour is far spent. Anything else, Commissioner Borum? No, I'm sorry, Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Borum, you got anything?
Nothing else.
I am. Uh, I'm going to save mine until the end of the month. So we'll, we'll stand adjourned.